Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of September 22, 2016. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd just like to announce that the Treasurers' Report for August 2016 is available in the Business Office. Closer? Can my head close? Is that good?
That's better.
Let me try it one more time. Okay, I'd like a resolution to approve the minutes for the Board of Education Business Meeting held on September 8, 2016.
Some move.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us right into presentations.
Introduction.
Dr. Wills, our very first item is the introduction of our student representatives to the Board of Education.
Well, we are very pleased to have with us two representatives who were elected to this post and distinguished members of our student body, Erin Peterson and Fred Bernstein. Sorry.
Do you know Fred Bernstein?
Sorry, Richard Bernstein. And he's known for his incisive questioning during the hiring of our high school principal and who is now here, or the candidates for the high school principal. He was part of the interview committee and Richard did a wonderful job. So I will remember that your name is Richard.
I'm so afraid I'm gonna call him Fred. But can I ask though, I know that this year how you were selected is a little bit different. I think you're part of the Student Council. So do either of you want to talk about that a little bit because it is a difference from in the past? Or just are you officers, are you members? How did that work?
Well, the way it works is that like last year we had four representatives from each class, the junior, sophomore, freshman, and senior, which I was the junior representative for that time. And we didn't think that was enough representation of the student body. So we decided to make three senators from each class, except the senior class gets four because they are the oldest. And from those select few, we would then vote on the vice president, president, treasurer, and one other, which I can't remember.
Secretary?
Secretary, yeah.
And then from that group, you were selected by the principal or you all selected being representatives to the board?
Well, last year we wrote the constitution for the new Student Council, which basically explains that both the president and the vice president must serve on Board of Ed meetings.
Okay, perfect. That's great, thank you. So that in the past, people that were officers may not have been the same people that were on the board. And I think this really ensures that our leadership and the people talking to the students are all represented here, so.
I think the Student Council has become quite a more robust organization and truly more representative of student needs. And I did have a chance to talk to Erin a bit about the role of advocacy and comment on issues. And of course, this year we have the issue of the feasibility of the later start of the high schools. So it's particularly important to have active student representatives on board.
Thank you and welcome. Okay, our next item?
Yes, next we have a very, very special opportunity to hear from one of our students. Lisa Fraser was nominated and selected.
Lily.
Could her name be Lily? Lisa might be Fred's sister.
This is bad. I'm having a moment. Sorry. And I have it right here. And Lily is my granddaughter's name, so.
Hi Lily.
Lily Fraser, who wrote the poem "The Trees." And what's significant is that she was selected by the Hudson Highland Land Trust of Words, the teen, I'm sorry, the River of Words Poetry Trail at the Hudson Highlands Nature Museum in Cornwall. And this is quite an honor, a distinguished honor, because there were four, there were 500 poems submitted and only eight were selected. 500 poems, only eight selected. And our fourth grader, now fifth grader, Lily Fraser, was selected to have her poem posted and on a sign at the Highlands Land Trust. And so we would love to have Lily read her poem if she would. Right here.
"The trees, they're so rough, yet I know on the inside they are gentle. But I know the sap is their true heart, like a person that speaks to me. Don't worry, I am sweet, not yet better. So beautiful as they change colors, red, yellow, and orange. As they change colors, so do I. Maybe red means red with envy. But when they are green and have blooms, they're the happiest person in the world. It speaks to me in a peaceful voice. They are so rough, yet I know on the inside they are gentle."
Thank you so much. What we would love to do Lily is post this on our website so that everyone in the community can read your poem. It's very inspiring. Thank you.
And congratulations to her teachers and her parents who must be.
I see Susan Boyd here.
I see beaming back in the room.
Yes, yes, that's wonderful. Thank you for coming, Mrs. Boyd. Appreciate it.
Okay. And now the next is our external audit report. Now, is that being changed?
That's being removed from the agenda tonight.
Yes. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum.
Right, right, we didn't have a quorum for the committee meeting tonight. So there was no audit report review by that audit committee. Then there has to be. So we have to reschedule that and it'll have to take place hopefully at a date not too far from now because it does have to be sent to the state by October 15th. So we're gonna have to reschedule something very soon and probably have it at the next board meeting next week.
Okay. Alright, so that moves us into the next agenda item, which is an update from our Con Edison Energy Performance Consultants. Thought I recognized them.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to introduce the members of this ConEd Solutions team. This is Dylan Albeck and Mike Smith. They're here to give a, as we move through our energy performance contract proposal, we're looking to make sure that the board is kept informed and the community as to our progress. Today we had our meeting, we have a bi-weekly meeting. We're at about the 60% mark for the investment grade audit, which is our first steps here. So again, what I'd like to do is have these gentlemen explain where we are. I also want to introduce Walter Hauser, who's here from KG&amp;D as our representative also, okay? So I'll turn it over to I guess Dylan, right?
Okay, as Pat said, my name is Dylan Albeck. I'm a project manager with Con Edison. Thanks for having us here this evening. We're here to give an update, 60% through the comprehensive energy audit that the Board of Education hired us to do back in July of this year when we received a letter of intent. So we've been evaluating the three schools here in Putnam Valley. And I'm gonna take you through the project as we see it today and kind of the next steps for the project. This here is a schedule, maybe a little hard to read, but it basically outlines the steps that we've completed to date in the comprehensive energy audit. As Pat mentioned, we had a kickoff meeting and have since had bi-weekly meetings with Pat and Jill and their staff for the facilities to update them on the progress of the comprehensive energy audit. We spent quite a bit of time in all the buildings, working with the custodial staff, getting information from the teachers and the occupants to work on our audit and document the existing conditions. We've had a progress meeting at 30% in August. And at that progress meeting, we discussed the baseline conditions for the energy audit. It's basically establishing how the buildings utilize the energy today so that we can have a benchmark for how we're gonna improve that going forward. As part of that, we installed some data loggers and some equipment to actually measure the energy that's used in the buildings. And that'll be additionally used in our project documents going forward. KG&amp;D has been involved as well. Their role is to provide the State Education Department permits and drawings that'll be required to fulfill that process going forward into implementation. This schedule at this point takes us through the entire CEA process being completed in basically mid-November. And from there, we've got submission of the comprehensive energy audit for review by Putnam Valley and submission of a contract document that would then be executed to implement the measures. This process will take us through SED. And right now, we're anticipating about a six-month turnaround from SED with a construction start in July of 2017. So here's the kind of highlights of what's in the project right now. LED light bulb replacements, essentially we're touching every light bulb that's in the three buildings of the district and converting them to LED. These LED lamps come with a 10-year warranty. So in addition to the energy savings that we're driving, we're also driving operational savings and maintenance savings. So it's a very lucrative measure that helps to pay for other measures in the project. HVAC geothermal retrofit at the elementary school. One of the primary drivers, I think, behind Con Edison's selection. We're utilizing energy from the ground at the elementary school to reduce the energy consumption in the school for both heating and cooling. Solar photovoltaics, we're looking at roof-mounted solar systems, ballasted systems throughout the district on all three schools. And I'll go into that a little bit more in the next slides. Building management system upgrades, these are building controls. So we're optimizing sequences of operation and continuing to improve efficiency in the building. We also have window and door upgrades, which kind of goes hand-in-hand with the geothermal project at the elementary school. So not only are we improving the energy usage at the school, we're also improving the aesthetics. We're taking older inefficient technology like window air conditioning units and replacing it with a more efficient geothermal technology. And then the smaller measures that help to contribute to the overall savings of the project. We have motor replacements, so we're putting in higher efficiency equipment. Variable speed drives, which is a motor controller that speeds up and slows down the motor based on feedback from the building management system. So it kind of meets the demand. Domestic hot water upgrades, we're replacing a domestic hot water heater with a higher efficiency one at the high school. Doing some more controls of the kitchen hood fan. Weatherization upgrades, that entails weather stripping of doors and windows and doing roof-wall joint foaming. So wherever you have a wall that intersects with a roof, generally there's some infiltration there that happens and we're gonna seal that with foam. And then window film is being assessed throughout the three schools as well. So this slide shows basically highlights of the elementary school project. And the two big pieces here are the geothermal and the window replacements. The different colors represent our hybrid approach to a geothermal system at the elementary school. When we first started this project, we tried to assess and we did assess the entire facility for a geothermal retrofit. Our goal was, let's try and get this facility off of fuel oil completely and served 100% by the geothermal well field that would be installed. The reason we assessed the entire building is because we wanted to custom tailor this project to meet the district's needs. And through the feedback from Pat and Jill and the facility staff, this is the end result at this point that we'll be moving forward with into our design phase. You basically have two sections here, the 1935 wing, which is the original building. The goal here is to remove the window air conditioners, repair and replace the windows that are there, and upgrade the classrooms to a hybrid geothermal system. And just to define what hybrid means, it's basically you have an air distribution system in the classrooms currently that has a hot water coil fed by a fuel oil boiler and no air conditioning through that system. You have a window air conditioner that's doing the AC in those rooms. And then you've got perimeter radiation that's served by the fuel oil boilers as well. So it's a, there are essentially two systems. One's doing the fresh air, one's doing the heat. We're going to be utilizing the air distribution system and converting that to geothermal but leaving the perimeter heat in place as a supplementary heating source. So let's see, the 1935 section, we're trying to cover all the classrooms. You can see here on the top left, there's the second floor and then you've got the third floor. The second floor is currently included in the project because it has window air conditioners. The third floor is not because of budgetary constraints, which that, those classrooms already have DX cooling through that air distribution system. And just to take a step back here, this slide, what it captures is a project that takes zero capital from the district. This project is 100% paid for by projected energy savings that we're calculating. So anything that's in gray here is not included in this project at this time without the additional input of capital from the district. The 1962 wing, we have seven or eight classrooms there and a cafeteria. The cafeteria is really a section that I think brings a lot of value to the district here because it's currently not cooled. And there's some issues there with students having to eat lunch in classrooms when it gets really hot. So we're taking care of a problem by adding cooling there. This is a picture of the North Athletic Field. This is a diagram of future septic expansion. It's a diagram from a study that was performed a few years back. And the reason I wanted to present it is the area in red is our future geothermal well field location. I'll show another slide in a few minutes that is a satellite image and you can get a better idea, but I think everyone's familiar with them. Solar photovoltaics, so this is another crucial part of our project. The energy generated from the solar photovoltaics helps offset the energy usage in the district and helps provide energy savings input for the geothermal project. So the more solar photovoltaic that we include, the more geothermal that we can get. It helps to drive that project. The high school, we've got 160 KW size system currently on the two roofs, the one on the main classroom bank and the other on the gymnasium. And the middle school, we've got the classroom bank, the gymnasium, and the cafeteria. So you can see, we're really trying to utilize 100% of the available flat roof spaces on the schools. This is the elementary school. So one of the things we wanted to present tonight is as we've gone through the comprehensive energy audit, we have made some adjustments to our approach. We've verified some assumptions and we've found things that we didn't find during the initial RFP response due to the fact that we're really in the buildings now. We've spent months in the facilities and we're uncovering things as we go. One of the items that we wanted to bring to your attention tonight is some tree shading issues at the elementary school. So the last slide that I'll show kind of, it identifies a revised project size based on a reduced-size solar project. And the net impact has, is basically zero to the simple payback of the project. So in other words, the energy savings still fully fund the project, just it's a smaller-size project. So what we wanted to talk about tonight is the ability, if the Board of Education wanted to, we could cut down the trees on the south side of the schools that are highlighted in yellow currently. And you can see in yellow, the trees that are in question. And in red are the shaded areas of the roof that are in question. I also have a video that I could show if there's any questions later. But I'd welcome any of the Board of Ed members to go and check it out and see what, kind of what we're talking about. It's roughly 100 to 150 feet off of the perimeter of the building. And currently, there are some trees that stick up above the building and are right against the building, up to 40 to 50 feet tall, so. We're also looking at the bus garage for solar. And there's again, some small tree issues there. We feel they're fairly minimal, being that it's a much smaller area that we're talking about in between the bus garage and the parking lot above. And then we're additionally looking at a possible ground ballasted location back behind the 2009 addition of the elementary school that could potentially also serve as sort of an educational tool if the Board of Ed wanted to develop some sort of curriculum to involve solar in the kids' education. So this is a satellite image of basically the same thing we were looking at. The yellow shaded section are the trees in question. I've shown an estimated property line to give you an idea of, you know, how far out we're going and where the district owns property. Again, 100 to 150 feet perimeter. And then you can see the possible solar ground location up on the upper right, another 50 KW that we can get back into the project. So these are the project highlights. I kind of referenced the total impact of the project with the shading issues at the elementary school. At the RFP response or when we were selected, we were at a $7.2 million project with $437,000 annual savings. And what's critical is the 18-year payback. That's the requirement from SED. So with this revised project, you can see we're down to $6.7 million with 409,000 savings, but still meeting that 18-year payback. That's it. I can play the video if you're interested or if you have questions, feel free to ask.
What's on the video?
So the video is... It's basically a 360-degree view of the trees from the roofline. So I'm standing on the gymnasium roof, which is a second-tier roof. And we're looking at what's below the gymnasium, which is the 1962 flat roof, the trees all around it. And then at the end of the video, or towards the end of the video, you can see the 1955 section or the back section of the school with the same tree shading issues.
So when do we have to make a decision on the trees in order to keep you on your timeline?
Sure.
Dave, what I was hoping for is after this meeting tonight that I could get a few board members to walk it. I'd actually like you to physically see this.
I'd say so. No, it sits up on the hill there and it's...
Well, yeah, actually, you're up in a section, you're up higher than the property. You go, it starts sloping off and goes down. But again, the trees are 40 to 50 feet.
And you're talking about, what, 100 trees there?
I'm talking about 100 feet of trees, not even 100 trees. Now, some of it is just scrub trees, some of it is, you know, full-sized trees and that. The biggest thing that we were looking at when I walked it last week, actually a bunch of us walked it last week, was looking at it, it doesn't, there is no neighbors next door. It's that wooded property if you were coming up. So you're looking at a couple of hundred feet even beyond that of just woods, you know, that's after our property. So it's not like, you know, we're gonna be clear scripting and then looking right, you know, the neighbors looking right in or things like that.
At first glance, what do you see replacing the trees? Just nothing? It's not, I mean, it's rocky, there's not gonna be grass.
Well, yeah, well, if you look at even close to the building now, it's, you can see it's a wet damp area because of the tree canopy, you're not getting much sunlight over there. What we're looking at was the possibility if we went forward with this of eventually planting, you know, younger tree saplings and that, that, you know, would have 25, 30 years to grow at that point. And then, you know, without having the impact, so. You know, we'd have to, we'd have to take out the older in order to, you know, to generate some of this here. But we'd like to think about replacing it and also give another, it could possibly be another area once it's graded for, you know, for student activities.
Could we take a brief look at the video?
Can we open that? A two-week decision? One week, you'd rather one though? Can you open this video or no? Yeah, there may be some errant sounds in it, so I wanted to mute it. What were you saying up there? I think there was a gym class going on with some music playing, so. Okay, so the cafeteria roof is what's in view right now? You can... Let me just pause it. So the first thing we saw is the cafeteria. Ahead of that is a parking lot. Essentially, what we're looking at, if you're talking 100 to 150 feet of trees, is out to the far edge of that parking lot. And at that point, it's fairly flat, maybe a little bit of uphill grade. And right beyond that, there's a rock wall and it kind of drops down towards the road. So here you can see how close the trees are to the building. Really, there's others that are much closer, 40 to feet, 40 to 50-foot tall trees. And this is kind of the shading issues of where we'd like to put our panels. And right now, we're basically looking west. So the video started off east, in the middle. When we got to the far roof section, we were looking south and now we're looking west. So we kind of have a perimeter that covers that whole east, east-southwest section. So that's the corner, we're looking at the corner of the 1955 wing? This is currently the corner of the 1962 wing. Oh, right, right. So now I'm gonna start to head back towards the north side of the gymnasium and you'll see across the way, the 1955 wing. And you can kind of see how close these trees are, they've really grown almost onto the roof. That's how squirrels get in. That's how, yeah. Vermin. Vermin abatement program. Far roof to the right is the 1955 wing. And again, you've got some shading issues there. I took this video this morning at around 11:00 AM. So, you know, these shading issues will magnify as it gets later. And then you can just see the rest of the flat roof beyond is where we have other solar panels proposed. I guess one of the questions I would have as far as trees are concerned, I mean, I have solar on my house and I get a report out of them, the savings I've had and the equivalent to the number of trees that are planted. If we could get almost an equivalency as to if we were to be able to add that much additional solar because we could cut down what, you know, what the equivalent? Yeah. I think essentially we're, solar is offsetting carbon, so. Right. We can do a calculation that would show you based on the project size for all the solar panels included in the project, how much carbon we're offsetting versus by cutting down, you know, 300 trees, how much carbon? And we're gonna replace those 300 trees with some additional trees as well. Right, so it's not gonna be a complete?
Which is an outside cost. It wouldn't be part of the project, that would be budgetary.
This area represents approximately, not exactly, but possibly 60 KW shaded area. We've calculated, again, approximate numbers. It would be about $350,000 in savings over the course of the project.
So we have to... Walk the property and make a decision. Yeah. But we also have to destroy nature to save nature, right? I mean, that's kind of the trade, it's a trade-off.
I think we can put some more time into thinking about other ways that we can support. I remember when we built this school, there was a project to plant some of these trees that are outside now, that are now much bigger. But there was trees, more trees planted to replace things and maintain some variable wildlife, et cetera. So, yeah, we can try and brainstorm some other ways.
It's easy to grow trees in Putnam Valley.
Augmented, yes, trees and rocks, yes.
We're good at. Trees in rocks.
How, you're gonna set up a time and you're gonna invite the board, any board members interested or who are available?
I'd like to do is walk away tonight with an idea as to what the availability is of, you know, if everybody can come, I understand, work gets in the way of a lot of people, so. But if we can get at least a representative section of the board that can carry the message back to the board members.
And then is this a resolution, or do we have to come back as a group to decide or is it just...
Again, if you have three members, I would say you open, you have to open a meeting of 48 hours notice. Even though there's no, there's no decision being made at that, but it is a meeting of four members.
I could do Tuesday afternoon. It's my first time I have it available.
Alright, so why doesn't everybody see if they're available Tuesday and get it back to Fran or Pat?
I can't do Tuesdays and Thursdays, so you guys can go without me, I can walk it myself.
it myself.
Okay.
Yeah, perhaps some of us can go one morning, some of us can go one afternoon.
So why don't we do the time, so we're not keeping the audience on our schedule? Why don't we do that tomorrow through some emails in terms of scheduling, and we'll go from there. And then we'll figure out what the procedure would be. Thank you very much. Okay.
Facilities, I think, is first. Facilities report is first.
Okay. So now we're going to, our next item is the administrators' 2016 opening of school reports.
So Dr. Wells, what are we doing first? Yeah, we'll start with the facilities report. Mr. Bellino?
Bottom left.
Yep. I was actually trying to open up the screen ahead of time. Okay, so again, this is my district operations summer activity report. I know the board has received some written communiques, back and forth emails as to what was accomplished, but I just figured for the community, we'll break it down by building. At the elementary school, as you all know, this was a busy summer, as they usually are. Custodial staff usually has about an eight-week window to get the buildings back to, you know, what we consider the way we want them to be ready for students in September. And each building had some work done, and some of the work was done outside also, so I'd just like to give a quick recap on it. At the elementary school, we did a complete redo of the kitchen and serving areas. The kitchen was completely gutted. All new equipment was brought in, new serving lines, new floors. A lot of work was done in there. It's all complete. We're waiting on one piece of equipment at this point. It should, it's due in here in about two weeks, this refrigerator unit. It's already, the wiring is already set for it. It's just, it's a plug-and-play. You just drop it in, and it plug it in, and it is ready to go. At the psychologist office suite, we made it ADA compliant. If you've ever been down that area, you know, going down towards the library, it's a set of doors, you know, based on the old 1935 building. We've reconfigured that area a number of times, and what we've had to do is, because of wheelchair activities and just the way the doors opened, it created a fire hazard, plus it wasn't ADA compliant. So what we redid is we redid that area to make it ADA compliant, make it a lot better and a lot safer. The former childside area, which you're all familiar with, was broken up into, it was four classrooms, but they were connected to each side of the hallway. We've closed that back up again now to make it four complete classrooms, separated, you know, completely separate classrooms now. We're right in the process right now. We're probably, and I want to give some thanks to Bruce Ludovici, who's donating the lumber for creating an outdoor classroom behind the, well, to the side of the, it's the first-grade wing, behind the gym and that area there. As I, Ralph, I believe you were with me when I walked it. As you go back in the area there, there's a former teacher, Ms. Alexander, who I believe was the first teacher. Her husband happened to be the superintendent originally, but she was the first teacher, and there's a big plaque on a stone back there for her. So I thought it was a really appropriate area for us to go back and to use. So that should be completed, God willing, probably in about, within two weeks.
And that's the location we're actually talking about with trees?
Yes.
Is it going to be like a deck kind of thing?
No, it's actually, it's an outdoor, complete outdoor classroom. It's going to be, Bruce is giving us logs that have been sliced to create seating. We've already, Ryan Odell's father-in-law, because Katie Odell was the one that asked if we would be considered to do this. Her father ended up putting together, we ordered blackboards, he created a complete enclosure for it. So we just got to, you know, put it into the ground to secure it, and then, you know, do the seating. We want to do the seating first. This way, you know, we've got room to maneuver in there. So the one area, the one last thing that I've got to look at is, again, to make it ADA compliant. We do have students that are, you know, in wheelchairs and that, would, I want to make sure that it's, you know, they have availability to get into the area. I don't want them sitting off to the side because, you know, they're handicapped. I want them to be fully, you know, fully engaged in what we do. So, but I believe I have a solution to that. My plan is to walk up there tomorrow anyway to, just to verify that what I'm thinking, what I want to do is, can work. Create a new active learning center on the first floor. We moved it from, Margaret, what was, third floor. We moved it down to, which is a much better location, larger area, down on the first floor. For those that are familiar, it was, I believe, Debbie Spurling's old classroom, which is really, was a weird setup for a classroom, but as an active learning center, I think it makes a great spot. The message board with digital signage, as we have the message board down here at the high school, middle school campus, we purchased one for the elementary school. The first issue we've had there is the fact that there is no electric down there. I brought an electrician to give me a price in order to run electric down there. His plan was to run it from the transportation garage, trench it down to where the sign is down by the road. The bill came to $15,000. Needless to say, I didn't do that. We contacted NICEG, the gentleman, his name's Bill Myers. What they're going to do is, we have the poles that go right up along the driveway. They came down, they did a survey of the area. They're going to pull off the transformers that are right along the road, bring it down to a terminal, to a box, a meter box, right there at the first location, and we'll only have to trench about 20 feet. So my, the only reason that this isn't completed is I'm waiting on them as it comes up on the project list. But that there, that'll save us obviously $15,000. Okay? The concrete bleachers at the lower field, you all remember what they looked like. They're now gone. The bad thing is, I really don't like taking down, you know, I don't like removing things that, to me, that are history of the district, but they were in such poor shape that they really needed to be removed. They were dangerous at this point. The good thing about it is, it's, you know, it's more sledding area now for everybody, so.
Exactly.
So I'm sure come the first snow flow, we'll hear some hopefully good things about that, so. The both gym floors, the old gym and the new gym at the elementary school were completely screeded down and refinished. It's a process we do every year. It's an outside company, but obviously, it requires us to keep moving things around in order to free up that area. We ran new plumbing lines from the cafeteria in the third-floor fountains, as you remember. Those were the two locations when we did our lead testing, water testing, that came up that there was issues. So, again, it was a 1935 section of the building. Trying to trace the lines would have been, you know, would have taken us forever. We just put new lines in. And they, we've, you know, we've retested, and we've come up 100% clean in all three buildings. One of the requirements that was, that came down from the state this year was to have carbon monoxide detectors installed in certain locations, whether there's motors or, you know, things like that. So that was completed, it was actually completed at all three schools. You're probably talking about 30 carbon monoxide testers in about, you know, in each building, The middle school, it's a white building, or, you know, at least it started white. If you, I should have brought pictures tonight to give you, to impress upon you how dirty the building actually was. We had the place completely power washed this year. It is shining now, so. But I'd like to make sure that it stays that way as we, you know, again, periodical, we'll have to do that. I think a lot of the things that have happened over the years is that, you know, maintenance might not have been kept up as often as it should. And I think if we can get on a program to do things like that, you know, it'll help the district, you know, stay shining, which is the way it should be. Lockers in the middle school. We definitely got our money's worth out of them. It was the original lockers from the building when they opened in 1972. You guys weren't out of there much long ago. You remember how thin and skinny they were, and you couldn't get a backpack and your coat in there, basically. We made them double wide compared to what they were and double stacked. Ed, I'm going to assume there's been no major issues with the...
No, it's actually us.
Okay. Yeah, it really, it freshens up that hallway completely, you know, both hallways completely. I think it's better for the students, they can actually, you know, put their bookbags away and their, you know, and their coats, before it was usually a choice, one or the other, so.
And kill all the rumors that we stick children in lockers, so.
Well, yeah, now there's an opportunity, at least. The one thing I want to give credit to the middle school for, obviously, there's, you know, they're stacked, so you have a lower and an upper. And they actually, you know, when they looked at the children, made sure that a child that was on the shorter side, that I would be back in middle school days, wasn't given an upper locker, that, you know, so they can actually read their numbers and do things like that. So that was just an extra thought done by the middle school staff, so. I want to thank them for that. It made life easier, especially with the training, you know, with the opening of the building for them to come in and practice on it, so. Again, middle school gym floor is completely done. I skipped one. We replaced the, well, the clock system, again, 1972.
Really?
You know, a lot of the equipment in the middle school is original, and you'd have a clock working here, you'd have another, right next door, the classroom wouldn't work. Next classroom might not even had a clock. We replaced the whole thing. We built in with the wireless system, and what it does, it syncs the middle school with the high school. One of the issues that we saw, is because we share staff in this campus a lot, is that they might be leaving the middle school at one moment, and they're late coming over to the high school because the clocks were off by a minute or two. So they might not have been getting there on time. Now, now both buildings are synced completely together, so. So if you leave, you know, the middle school to go to the high school, the high school to go to the middle school, vice versa, everybody's on the same time. Again, carbon monoxide detectors, as I said, was, it's part of new regulations. That's been completed there also. We removed the old bookcases at the former library area on the second floor and installed new walls to create the new middle school active learning lab. I'm sure most of you already seen that area. Furniture has now been ordered for it to complete it. With the active learning lab, it's converted to include walls and writable glass. The glass you can write on, and the interior walls are pretty much like whiteboard material. You can't write on the outside one, so please don't do so if you want to go and put your autographs up there. In doing that, we re-tiled all the floor space and all the walls and that were repainted. And again, as I said, the furniture was ordered to create it, to facilitate a hands-on, creative, collaborative learning environment. This last line was a complete rip, which you'll hear a couple of minutes from Mr. Halas's presentations. Yeah, it sounded familiar to you, didn't it? At the high school, we had a number of changes this year in order to improve the flow, you know, in talking with Sandy. We took down the wall between classrooms, between rooms 121A and 121B, and returned it to a full-size classroom. It was a full-size that had been cut in half. We cut that back to being a full-size. Created a teacher workroom on the first floor to open up a space for an active learning center in the library. That is a pending project at this point, because I've talked to Mary Fran and Sandy, Mary Fran being the librarian upstairs, to talk about what areas we can, the area that we want to, we want to use as an active learning area to make sure that it fits the scheme of what we want to accomplish with the library. We created a new senior junior lounge area on the lower level and in the courtyard. Again, the lower level, if you're coming out of the academic wing, going towards athletics, that'll be the area on the inside, and the furniture, picnic furniture and that has been purchased already and in place out in that courtyard area. The interior furniture is scheduled to be here about mid-October. That'll include chairs, benches, right along the window area there, there'll be a counter height with chargeable areas to charge, you know, charge up their phones or for their computers, just areas for them to, you know, to sit backs and, sit back and de-stress from the classroom day. Again, carbon monoxide testers, you saw. We did a number of upgrades to the audio/video capabilities of the PAC. We received a generous donation from one of the community members. We are now back to what I would consider being a state-of-the-art facility from an audio and video standpoint there. There's still other things that I want to get done up there, but right now, we can hold our own with anyone. Actually, it'd be better than most, to be honest with you. Kitchen equipment, again, at the high school here, we did some upgrades to the equipment and the serving stations. We relocated some of them, make it a better flow for the students and for the serving staff in there. The big addition is, was the addition of a second panini machine, which seems to be the hot choice of everybody. And that'll be, that'll be wired in as of actually Saturday. But I'm believing from what I'm hearing, the number of students are looking at the paninis a lot, so. Okay, back in the PAC, again, we did fireproofing of the stage curtains and the repairs. Again, from a maintenance standpoint, you require it every five years to fireproof them. But what we did is we took them down, sent them out. For any minor, you know, things over the years, you know, you've got to remember, those curtains are now 16 years old. They can last a long time as long as you keep them up and you maintain them, and that's what we did. We sent them out. Suzie Cummings oversaw that project for me, made sure they came in, did that. They did a great job. In addition, they re-waisted the rail system for us and actually cleaned off all the, they really went over and above what they were really required to do. Athletics-related, new baseball scoreboard. As you're aware, the former scoreboard parts were no longer available. Again, 16 years old. Additionally, the operation of this board had to be done from the booth. The new scoreboard is wireless, and it means it can be operated from anywhere at field level, which makes it ADA compliant. Again, my concern, as somebody that has difficulty with stairs himself, was you had to be, you had to go up into the press box to operate this thing, and if somebody was having difficulties walking or getting up there for any reason, you know, it really wasn't, you know, it wasn't conducive to somebody, you know, with a handicap. Right now, they could be sitting down at field level. Same thing with our new football scoreboard, you know, multi-sport scoreboard, the one at the football field there, can be operated from anywhere. It doesn't have to be up in the press box. We did, at the walkway, if you're going down towards the field itself, we have the drivable area where, you know, the gate opens up. Most of the times, we have that gate locked during the day. If, you know, if we have no major sporting events going on there, we keep that gate locked. What we did is, we created a pathway, again, for anybody that might be handicapped, that can't, couldn't walk around that gate because it wasn't, you know, it wasn't a level area. So we created an area so people could join right up in there. We also did a new ADA compliant pathway from, you know, to the girls softball track and soccer field area. Again, if you remember, the pathway took you down in front of the press box, took you approximately three-quarters of the way around to the other side, about midfield. What we did is, we took it the other way now, from the path all the way over, so that, you know, the girls, or, you know, the soccer players, you know, the girls softball, soccer players and that, didn't have to walk through the field or through the mud, you know, if it was a rainy time, to get to their, you know, to their sport. We're in the process right now. We've already completed the bench area, softball. When we originally put the place, put the sports in place, we did a paved area for the bench, the bench area. Baseball, we never did. What we did now is, I've already got that paving done, so that we, you know, now it's, again, if the weather's bad or whatever, they're not sitting in mud, or they're not kicking up mud, things like that, so it's, so that's now in place. Let me jump down one. We're in the process of creating, in those areas, both at softball and in baseball, the enclosed dugout area. It'll be done with chain link, just waiting process. We've already processed it. It's all ready to go. I'm just waiting for the gentleman to finish a project he's doing in Cortland, and they'll be doing it probably, like I said, should be completed by mid-October. You know, this way, it's done before the winter sits in and it's ready for the spring season. And then, again, the refreshment of the baseball and softball fields, working with Brian Burrow. Brian, what was, 90 tons?
130.
So 130 total tons of clay were brought in to redo both fields. We've had a group, we've gotten a lot of compliments of late, as to the conditions of those fields. So we want to make sure, again, we want to keep them up, we want to keep them right. And I think that's gone a long way. 130, I mean... And I, and I think that's gone a long way. A hundred and thirty, I mean, if you think about a hundred and thirty tons of clay. But it was well worth the investment to, to make sure, you know, our students can play safely. Last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to give kudos and special thanks to the hard work and caring custodial and, and groundkeeping staffs at, at both campuses. All this work is in addition to, you know, getting the buildings ready. So now, in fairness, some of this work is accomplished by outside groups, but our inside custodial staffs and, and grounds crew have to maneuver around them between the camps and everything else. It, it's constant shuffling all summer to get things done. I always feel sorry for the, sorry are for the elementary staff because they're, you know, not, they're not in the air-conditioned campus like over here. Hopefully soon they will be if we move forward with this project. But it's, just to watch them day, day by day do the job, they, they really take a lot of pride in what they do. They want the places to be the best they can be, so I'd just like to, I gotta tell you, they, they make my job very, very easy. So I just wanted special, you know, special thanks and kudos to them. Thank you. Anybody, any questions?
No. Busy summer.
Thank you.
You know, it's, it's important also, I, I just wanted to comment that facilities and the educational processes connect. And without some of the work that, you know, has been done to redesign, for example, at the elementary school with the learning lab, at the middle school, at the high school with the achievement center, we can't do the educational piece without that environmental change, and to have this kind of leadership in that area is very significant in, in regards to our educational program. And there's that real communication there as we do these, these things. There's a lot of enthusiasm with the facilities director, with, with Pat. The enthusiasm for education is significant, and it really helps make this process work, so. Next, we have athletics, physical education, athletics. Brian? Brian Burrow, athletic director.
Hello. Good to see everyone. So I, I believe I gave Dr. Will some of this information to read to you during the last meeting, but I'm just gonna review it just a little bit, hopefully offer a little bit more information and expand a little to some of the things that we've brought in and we are currently working on for this new year. By the way, I thought I was going after some of the other presentations that I've seen, and they have fireworks and moving thing, pictures. So I, I had to put at least a little splash of something up there.
Doesn't seem to spill something.
Scary. It's a little, it's a little creepy.
It's abstract.
Little bit.
Okay. So one of the things that I tried to relay with this PowerPoint, rather than just a review of all the things that we've been doing, is try to promote and move forward with some of the community relations that we're trying to incorporate through not only the educational side of the school, but the athletic side. This piece being through our physical education and health department. Dan Turner has been running the Just Say No and Go 5K for a few years now. This past week, he ran, and there were about one hundred participants. We would like to get that to grow. There's another one coming up in the spring. I asked about the date. He wasn't quite sure yet, but we will try to get that out to you as soon as we have it down so that we can make sure that we support that. I asked specifically what this particular event was for and if he would give a brief statement, which I have here, and I'm going to read it to you. He, he wrote it himself, and I thought it was really telling of, of the caring and what our teachers try to provide for the community and vice versa, what the community gives to us and inspires us to, to do in return. So this, this year's Just Say No and Go was a successful one again. Our goal has been and continues to be supporting our community in a variety of ways. In years past, we typically supported our community in its stand against drug use. Over the past three years, with money raised, we've sent roughly twenty or more Putnam Valley children to various summer camps and activities in an effort to keep them engaged in healthy, socially and mentally engaging physical activities. This year, our community supported, shifted, support shifted focus a bit. We recognized a Putnam Valley kindergartner who was diagnosed in July with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. While, while he still has a long road ahead, this individual is fighting the good fight and continues doing well with treatment. Half of the money raised this year went to his family to help him cover some of the financial needs during this difficult time. The other half of the money continues to fund Putnam Valley children in need, whose families may, might need assistance to pay for their participation in parks and recreational activities. We're hoping to host another event in late spring, and, and we are wide open to any ideas or suggestions for fun, family, and community-based activities. Please email middle school health and PE teacher Dan Turner with any suggestions or ideas. And he also has a Facebook presence, and I, I did put it out on Twitter, which goes to the school app. But we would like to build it up and try to have more community support, student support, potentially teams and such go out and, and make that connection there. This is a part that I think Fran shared with the board and the community last time, but just to put the numbers up on the screen, we have two hundred fifty-nine total Putnam Valley athletes this fall for Just JV and Varsity compared to two eighteen last year, so that is quite a jump. I think it, it is attributed to a couple of different things. I think that some of the coaching changes that we've made, the students are very comfortable with. I think that the overall feel for the program is very positive and that the kids are, are giving it a try and hopefully sticking with it, which we need in a small community. And then there's the part that I just don't know. I don't know where they came from, but it's wonderful to see. You could tell right away that there were just more kids out there, and I, I thought we should really add it up and try to figure it out, and it was pretty shocking when you think that this many students went out that haven't before. We, we had a number of teachers that are now coming back to coach here, that again, could be a variety of reasons. Many time you get them coming back after their children are, are now away at college, you get them sort of at the beginning, at the end of their career, around their kids. And, and some have come back that still have very many young children, which is also telling, so. That was a joke. Okay. Nothing. All right. But anyway, we're very happy to have them back. Again, on the community relations, we've been working with a variety of the local leadership of the athletic groups. Touchdown, I'm sorry, the PV Football Club, the Lacrosse Club, and really reaching out to those leaders and having them communicate with our varsity coaches on what they want. I'm sorry, our varsity coaches communicating to them about what they want the children to learn, so that when they come up, it's a very cohesive thing. In addition to that, we've also been reaching out with them and with a variety of other community members on trying to facilitate more of a community support for character development in a number of ways. One of the things that John Moljo and I have been working on even up to today was to try to come up with a, a more aligned program that we can share with varsity coaches and the other coaches on staff to develop very specific targeted character traits that we would like to see supported through our student athletes. And I have just a brief statement. He's going to put this out very, very soon. We were working on just wording and things like that. But this is something that he and I have been working on. Says, "Moving forward, Team Moljo's strength and conditioning will be investing time and energy into strengthening the culture of all Putnam Valley athletic programs. We'll be working closely with coaches to develop and support student athletes in regards to their character, attitude, motivation, and effort. All of these intangibles play a huge role in the success of our athletic programs and community as a whole. We want to, we want to have programs filled with student athletes who will positively represent Putnam Valley, both on and off the field, courts, et cetera. Most importantly, we want to help athletes become better students, teammates, and overall people." And this is something that you, you sometimes try to facilitate, and it, if you don't have people out in the community willing to work back with us, it doesn't take off quite as quickly. So this is, it's pretty exciting. I was very excited when he reached out because, of course, this is something that we work on every day, developing the character of our young student athletes. So I'm, I'm excited to see where it goes, and I hope everybody is able to support that as we move forward. Family ID. We've talked about this a little bit now. Family ID is a, an online registration program that parents will be able to utilize in order to hopefully streamline the athlete registration process. The program will store information that the parent puts in there, so you could have multiple students in the district that have multiple emergency contacts based on their different sports. And rather than every four months having to find that piece of paper with that information and write it down, you're just gonna click on a drop-down menu and it'll all be stored in there time and time again. Your kids could have different doctors. If your family is not together per se, you may have different doctors, different areas, and it's all going to be stored in there. It should streamline the process very much for parents. The thing it'll do for us on our end is it will email the coach every twenty-four hours with updated rosters so they won't have to communicate back and forth with the athletic department, trying to pull rosters and communicate with students and so on and so forth, see who has their physical impact test, so on and so forth. They will know up to the minute who has updated, and they'll be able to reach out to them and hopefully push them along, so to speak, to get that all taken care of. On the nurses' side, they will be alerted when things are updated for each, uploaded for each individual student so that they can select it, approve it, whether it be a physical or otherwise. Now, we, we understand that this is going to be a bit of a transition. We will still allow for paper, always. That, that's not a problem. It's just a different method. It's not a, a new method per se as far as different information. All of our information that we currently use is uploaded into this program and stored there. On the, Chappaqua has the same attorney group that we use, and they have had this cleared as far as security, and all the information laws and rules that we need to follow have all been cleared already through our attorney group. So we're, we're pretty excited to use it. Just earlier today, I got the template in. Originally, we, we were thinking about rolling it out for the fall, but our nurses are only in the district for about ten days in the summer and with everyone away, families and such, and the nurses not in. I just didn't think it would be a good time to roll it out. We pushed it back to winter, so we have our template in. It does need a little tweaking to get some more information on there. And we'll roll it out. We'll probably hit you with a connected every day for two weeks. I'm not sure. But that's how Hen Hud said. They, they put it out every single day, just to make sure that it was out there. And the feedback on it is excellent. Every group, school, rather, that has used it is very, very happy with it so far.
Will be, will we be able to access it from the app?
I would believe, maybe not the app, but the internet, because the link will be on our website in order to log in.
You could have, you could have a link in the app.
Yeah, you could have the link, but you're still gonna, it'll bring you to a web interface.
Mike is here. Maybe you can help us. Will you be able to? Yes.
Yeah, right. It's still gonna link to the webpage.
I mean, as a matter of, will it be, will it be portable friendly, mobile friendly or not? That's a different story.
Yep. Anything that can get internet on it, we'll, we'll be able to use it.
And winter is a good time to do it because it's less sports.
It is. And it's also, everybody's here, they're back from vacation, they're in school mode, they're looking for school emails. It just seemed like a better time to roll it out. Okay, we have two new members to the Putnam Valley family. Megan Smithison is our trainer. It's been working, she, she is tremendous. Not only is she just a great person, but she, the support that she gives us on the fields and within the school day is just above and beyond what I, what I thought it was gonna be. It's excellent. She's getting to know the students on a personal level, so she can put them through rehabilitation exercises based on specific injuries. She follows up with parents. She took over running the impact test. So I was more of an assistant and facilitator, and she would run them. It's just been excellent, excellent. And the coaches, the students, I think Rich, yourself, said it was the best thing. What did you say?
Yeah, well, I just got tendonitis in my left Achilles tendon, and I went, well, I went immediately straight to her, and I feel extremely like much better now. It's amazing. I can't believe.
Excellent. We had, for the...
We do have to recognize Mr. Spittle for his, he was very, very much an advocate.
For four years, Mr. Spittle has said we need an athletic trainer.
Yes, and you know, we had tried last year, and we, the, the company we're working with could not find someone suitable and wanted to wait till we had a quality person, and we do.
I saw her in action today on the soccer field.
She's terrific.
She was needed twice, and, and it was great to have her there.
You really want the best possible person for this type of work.
She's doing a great job. And Kathy Versano is the new secretary for the athletic department. She comes to us from Woodlands where she was the athletic secretary for three years. She's doing a wonderful job. She basically jumped on the treadmill that is Putnam Valley Athletics, and she's running as fast as her little legs will take her. She's wonderful, wonderful person. I'm thrilled to have her working here. And please stop by and say hello. She does like, you know, to meet new faces. I'm trying to get her up to speed with who everybody is and bring some kids in there, but until they, until they know her, they don't just pop in, so, so come say hello, and, and we're very happy to have her on board. Homecoming. This weekend, we have our homecoming events, September twenty-fourth, and the following games are scheduled. We sent this out in a connected as well. The volleyball team will be away at a Clarkstown tournament. Field hockey will play Lourdes at ten AM on Saturday. Boys soccer will be home versus Pennis at noon. Girls soccer, Brewster, home at two o'clock, and varsity football will be home versus Artsley at six PM. So come out, support the teams. I think each team is planning a, a small get-together after so the parents and families and friends can come and eat and hang out and, and then hopefully enjoy the next game. And the physical education staff has been hard at work improving different things. The high school, we have our new course, which is going tremendously well. The elementary school has an Olympic fitness challenge. I said, give me something that's new, that you're doing, that maybe people don't know about. And the elementary school, they do a lot of different things with the whole building, trying to get them active in the mornings so that the students have as much physical activity as they can. And Alyssa and Frank came up with the Olympic fitness challenge, being an Olympic year, and they came up with these five different activities, and they included the families. So they sent this home, and the parents track their activity and when the kids do the activities, and they have different, a variety of different acknowledgements based on how many days you are active. So thirteen to nineteen would be bronze, twenty to twenty-four silver, twenty-five to thirty gold. And just a little kudos and try to promote physical activity inside and outside of the school. Ultimately, that's the goal. We can't get them just perfectly physical fit in school. We try to facilitate so that when they leave school or when they're out of school, they know how to do it, they know what to do, and educate the whole child. I think that's it. Anything else? Any questions? Any questions?
I do just want to comment on the run on Saturday. I've been to everyone in there. My whole family ran it this year. But the attendance by the middle school and elementary school teachers probably accounted for a good percentage of your 100 representatives. They were certainly there. They've been there every year, but they were certainly there to represent and to support Liam Cron. It was wonderful hearing him do the "On Your Market, Set Go." I don't think there was a dry eye among the adults, though those dry eyes were winded by the cross-country team racing ahead as soon as they started. So it was really a wonderful, 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 wonderful day. It is every year. This year, there was something a little special to it. And then seeing all the teachers and all the family leave acts that we approved, we now see all the little people are at these events.
Right.
In their strollers and running and it was really great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Next.
Margaret, Margaret Podesta, principal of the elementary school.
Ed, whether we start young or old, you're always in the middle. Have you noticed that?
Do I do it?
Yeah.
Oh, I do it. I'm waiting to do it. I'm waiting for Dan to help me out here. So is that... Hi, everyone. I'm Margaret Podesta and I'd like to talk about the smooth opening to the elementary school that we've had this year. I don't have fireworks or moving pictures, but I do have lots of pictures and our kids are just so cute. I'll win you over with that. All right, so before I get into the school year, I just want to quickly review the summer work that went on in the elementary school. Curriculum-wise, we had every grade level meet to work on their curriculum, whether it be ELA mapping, math work, professional development that they took on themselves and planned to do together as teams. So that was all very successful. We had teachers work together to plan for the use of this active learning space, otherwise known as the Makerspace. We had Mrs. Bros here tonight, but also Ms. Parmley. They've been instrumental in organizing this area and planning with Mrs. Bruno and several other teachers. So we really, really appreciate that work. We had teachers come together again this summer to look at our master schedule. We had taken input from the teachers just to see if we could make slight modifications to it to make optimal learning for all of our students. And we didn't have to work long, but there was always some compromise involved between the grade levels and trying to make it right. We gave kindergarten a little bit of a longer morning so that they'd have a longer stretch of time before they kind of peter out later in the day. And, you know, so far, it's going very well. We had a grammar team committee meeting based off our ELA work last year. We wanted a bigger focus and scope and sequence on teaching grammar. And so we had teachers come together to create resources for all teachers to grab from that align with the standards. And in doing that, teachers now don't have to go searching for things that they feel there might be gaps in their curriculum. It's all put together for them. So we feel really good about that because it's standards-aligned. We had speech teachers work on Sounds in Motion, a program they're introducing to the primary grades to help with phonemic awareness, critical in learning to read. And of course, the building changes and updates. I have some pictures to show you, but Mr. Bellino has been instrumental in making our building really beautiful, updated, along with Mr. Renzo. They worked so well and we appreciate everything, from the technology to the paint to the new doors. I do want to thank the Board of Education for approving the Kinder Camp that took place for the first time this year. It was extremely successful. We had four half-days, 9 to 12, from August 16th through August 19th. We invited a certain number of students, most of them, a high majority. Their parents said, "Yes, we'd love to come." Why did you ask them? But either way, they're coming. And we had transportation provided for the students who were interested in that. Twenty-two students came and it was an introduction to school. And it was based on the kindergarten screening that could have involved their knowledge of concepts or it could have involved just transition, leaving mommy at the door and going down the library for the screening. We had two classrooms, two kindergarten teachers, so about 10 to 11 students depending on the attendance, 10 to 11 students in a class each day with a teacher aide in each class. We had Mrs. Hill, our nurse, on-site the entire time, so we didn't need her at all because she was there. And then we had an occupational therapist come in the first day, Dr. Michelle Lucier, who provided activities for the students, lots of fine motor development, lots of activities for our youngest learners. So it was wonderful. We also had a parent information meeting on the first day where the parents were invited to come in and just talk about activities you can do at home to support your young learners. Everything from rhyming and singing and counting to fine motor activities, breaking out the Play-Doh and the clay and, you know, rhythmic patterning, all of that. And they were so appreciative, I have to tell you. The parents were just so appreciative of this program. Every day, the youngsters left with big projects in their hand and big smiles and if there were any tears, it took away from the tears that we saw on September 1st and 2nd. So it helped with that beginning, which was wonderful. In the top picture there, you can see Mrs. Burdette doing a story or activity there in the circle. And then, of course, they always got their playtime and their snack time just to get used to school routines. So we are appreciative. We'd love to do it again and I would say that if word gets out, more parents might say, "What about me?" You know, because it was a nice introduction before the full day started.
How many of the 22 utilized transportation?
I would say only about four. Most parents, because they're so young, were more comfortable dropping off and picking up. Yep. So we have enjoyed a nice opening to school. You've seen these enrollment numbers. You can see our kindergarten numbers with the five sections, nice sections. New Horizons has eight students in it. First grade sections are the six sections of kindergarten from last year, still healthy, but not, you know, not huge, but a good number of children in that grade level. Second grade, 20 to 22. Third grade, 19 to 23. We had a little bit of movement there. And fourth grade, you know, that's a big class right there. So we're at 26 in a couple of sections and the teachers are looking at me, but we're okay right now. We had some surprise enrollments at the end of August, but we're good. And in some of those classes, some of the children leave for ELA and math and get their instruction in the Achieve Room. And then New Horizons, grades three, four, six students. And this is an interesting number. When I had first come to Putnam Valley several years ago, I heard a number, I'm not sure if it was accurate, that seven students in the district received ENL. But so just in the elementary alone, we have 23 students receiving ENL services, English as a new language. So you can see a change there. And of course, we have Mrs. France, who is our full-time ENL teacher for our building. It's the first year that we've had one person full-time in the elementary and it's going so well, really well. We had a picnic with our PTA right the first Friday after school started and great turnout, beautiful, beautiful weather. And you can see a buddy bench here where three of our older students in Putnam Valley worked on for a Girl Scout medal or honor. And they donated this buddy bench and actually provided us with an assembly that they designed and wrote for our K-2 classes last spring. The buddy bench was donated this fall and Ray helped put it in ground and so it's nice and safe. And if you're looking for a friend or you want to help a friend, you can go sit on the buddy bench and so far, so good. So it's there. We started the year right away with bus safety drills and our assistant principal, Ms. Mastrata, said, "You know, why don't we ask all students to wear their seat belts even though it's not mandated by state law? And if parents prefer them not to wear the seat belts, just let us know." So maybe we've heard from one or two students, the children are in their seat belts, they're sitting in their seats. It's so far helping us beautifully, just with the activity on the bus, behaviors on the bus. So we had the bus safety drills right on day two. Mike Konig was helping from the custodial transportation staff. We have a new program that Mrs. Odell has brought to our school. It's through the AAA, the Safety Patrol. So you can see these charming fourth graders who have just started this week in their Safety Patrol positions, morning and afternoon. They have posts, which I must tell you, they are taking very seriously. And she has coached them beautifully to use polite words, "Please walk in the hallway and please walk safely." And they are taking this so seriously. These students have to sign a contract about homework, attendance, punctuality, behavior, and they can lose their position. This program comes with a lot of dignity and a lot of integrity. And this is a new thing at Putnam Valley and it's really teaching leadership among the students. It's very exciting. We also are having town hall meetings with each grade level, Ms. Mastrata and I, involving the Character Ed Committee as well. And that is to talk at recess just about role-playing, good behavior, solving problems, not getting physical, all of those nice talks that you can have monthly and we're having them together once a month. And just some more pictures of our Safety Patrolers in action here in the hallways and out near the buses. Of course, we're supervising them also from afar, but they get the yellow badges. Oh, oh, the yellow sashes were donated by the PTA and we appreciate that so much. We asked and right away, it was a big yes and all of a sudden, they were here. And we have three sessions of Safety Patrolers. We have the fall session, the winter, and spring to give enough children in this large fourth grade class a chance if they're interested. They had to apply, they had to write an essay, and then of course, once they were accepted, they had to sign a contract. So they're learning about life. That's what they're doing. We have already had three back-to-school nights. Kindergarten, of course, with the orientation and bus run was on August 29th. Grades three and four, the parents came on September 12th and grades one and two, September 14th. This is actually a picture of the Kinder Camp parents who came for the parent information meeting. But of course, our teachers are always so welcoming and well-prepared for our parents and that's a very informative night. It's, we really need the parents to be there that night. Most parents are there, but it's the whole routine, talk, the schedule, the calendar, and of course, the curriculum for that grade level. We've had a very, very busy September. We've already had the PTA kickoff, I think was last night at our building, but I meet with the PTA reps regularly. They provided a welcome-back breakfast for the entire staff, which was wonderful. We have our new math and ELA coaches, instructional support people in place, so Mick Coleman for math and Cheryl Kahn for ELA. They're already busy with teachers in classrooms, sharing data, setting up meetings, so we're excited about that. Our AIS teachers had a very early start. We started school on September 1st, which was a Thursday, and they were in action with students by the next week, by, right after Labor Day. So right away, that got started using our data and our student data meetings. So by the second week of school, we had our new student data meeting, all new students that came into our district to look at their reports and to see any services that were needed. We've had many, well, several language proficiency team meetings for students who could qualify for ENL services but also have an IEP. So the state has new regulations that these LPT meetings must take place as soon as the students come into the district. And we've been on par with that, making very critical decisions about a child's education based on their needs. Our RTI follow-up meetings are already taking place for students who were in the RTI process last year. We're seeing how they're doing now and what needs to be done as far as interventions coming up. And also the continued kindergarten screening for students who weren't available for screening in the spring. Teacher meetings are taking place to review state test data with Cheryl Kahn and Mick Coleman, but I'm involved, Jeanette Mastrata's involved. Really, there's quite a bit of data available this year from many more questions available. Each teacher can see how his or her class did with certain questions relating to standards. So there's a lot of information there that can inform instruction and we're hoping that leads to even more progress. Just data update meetings as far as where students are now compared to where they were in the spring and what we can do now to kick off the progress in a strong way. And of course, we've already had six fire drills, lockdown is quickly approaching and just going through what a school needs to do and keep us all safe. We've already met as a crisis team in the building just to go over our roles and anything coming up as far as lockdowns, lockouts, and to keep us safe and channels of communication were reviewed. We've had a Character Ed Assembly where DASSA was reviewed, our Tiger Choices were reviewed through our Character Ed, and they are bringing a theme on handling small problems and big problems. And every classroom was given a book called "The Energy Bus," which teaches a lot about Character Ed through story. Our building steering committee has met and we have several meetings, of course, planned throughout the year, always with the opportunity to add meetings if we want, but we discussed a lot of what's on the list here and also some new ideas for this year. One idea that we discussed was a school-wide theme that Dr. Wills and I have talked about and it's a theme that all grade levels can come into, which is, "Why is nature important to us?" So as I'm stressing with teachers, this is not something extra, not something added, but it is something that we want all classes to come together to build community as learners. And this is a good example of what the outdoor classroom might look like if there were tree stumps and all-weather chalkboard, but right now, it was a beautiful day, so this teacher took her class outside. But we're really excited about that outdoor classroom. But we're also excited about taking this nature theme, sharing it with the community, putting things on display, and encouraging communication between the grade levels. As far as building updates, you've heard that we have a new kitchen, the cement bleachers were removed, the outdoor classroom is coming, we have a new, newly painted and newly located Makerspace. We have new technology furniture. So the old furniture in the technology room went down to where the new staff lounge professional development is. But this technology, and I wish you could see it better, these desks for the students, they can be moved and partnered and sit in circles. It's much more ready for collaboration and, you know, creative talk and strategic problem-solving in the technology space where Ms. Cirillo teaches. So we're really excited about that. Mr. Fiore was asking for new furniture for several years and now he's in the high school and we got it. But this is very much more kid-friendly and easy to use and move around the room. We do have the availability at this point for a nice, beautiful faculty lounge, which was painted and some of the kids helped me pick the colors for that. It's very, very inviting, so it's great for the staff breakfast and things where we have professional development, the speakers coming in, and it's just a nice place to be. We have new ENL and behaviorist offices because we have a, the behaviorist there for 15 hours a week. She's amazing, by the way, Ms. Poli, and she really is. And we have Dorothy France has a new office in the ENL room, which is a suite shared also with the PTA, Free For Me, near the library. And of course, on top of what all the custodians did this summer, there were many classroom changes. All third grade is now up in the original part of the building. First grade, they all wanted to be together down by the gym. So while the custodians were busy waxing floors and managing other people, they were moving teachers' classrooms too. It was a lot of work and it was a very, very hot summer. So here we have it. Here is the Makerspace as it is right now, without children in it yet, but those shelves in the back, a community member donated those beautiful wood pieces to hold all of the materials that we asked the PTA and parents to donate. We brought tables down from another room, so nice wood tables for the children to work at. There's a smartboard in that room. There's metal shelving so that projects that have to dry and wait for the next opportunity for the class to come in, each class can sign out the Makerspace. They're there. We have materials that have been organized in such a creative way by Ms. Parmley, Ms. Bros, Mrs. Bruno, several other teachers that, I mean, you have milk cartons hanging on a hammock because that's a cool place to store them. It's just, it's just so inviting. It's painted a couple of shades of light purple so the children walk in and they're like, "Oh, this is neat," you know? So it's really a creative inventive space, very geared toward elementary school. This is the new professional development room, which we didn't need it for a classroom this year, so I kind of took advantage of the moment. It's very inviting. It's, you know, we set up the refrigerator in there, there's a phone line in there. We can, if we have speakers, they can come in. It seats about 24 to 28 people. It's just, it's just so inviting. It's painted a couple of shades of light purple, so the children walk in and they're like, oh, this is neat, you know? So it's really a creative inventive space, very geared toward elementary school. This is the new professional development room, which we didn't need it for a classroom this year, so I kind of took advantage of the moment. It's very inviting. It's, you know, we set up the refrigerator in there, there's a phone line in there, we can, if we have speakers, they can come in. It seats about 24 to 28 people, and just comfortable and peaceful, actually. And then, of course, we have, very importantly, the curriculum updates that we've been working on. For the ELA, we're still using a combination of TC reading units, which have been updated and more aligned. We also have teachers using ELA modules from New York State and many things that are brought in, such as the Ready Books, the Achieve 3000. The Smarty Ants program is for kindergarten through second grade. It's under the Achieve 3000 company, and Cheryl Kahn was training teachers in K1 and 2 in how to use that very student-friendly data-filled program today. Wordly Wise is the vocabulary program being used in grades three through eight this year, so that's consistency. The Ready Practice Problem Solving, we're very much, we're big fans of the Ready Books for math and ELA practice, and they also have the Ready Toolbox, which is an online program. We also have the Grammar Binders, which our grammar team made for each grade level, and that is for scope and sequencing, but it's also to have things not missed and make it easier for teachers to find resources. Cheryl has given us binders that you can just flip it and display your standards so that every child in the classroom knows exactly what the learning target is, and that's displayed for all students. And of course, New York State has released more annotated released questions, so those are available to our teachers for practice for our students so that the exposure is throughout the year and we don't have to guess. We certainly don't have to guess as much as we used to as far as what the format will be. Next week, we have ELA data meetings taking place for grades three and four, and this is, this is exciting because this is professional development looking at our own students and our own student needs. It's, it's so filled with important information and how you can connect it to your teaching. So we see our student answers, we see where they're missing certain things, we see what teachers might be able to help other teachers in getting a certain standard across in a classroom. The data gives us that information. The questions, many in ELA and math have the same types of question stems, so the teachers can examine that. And you can say, you know, is it teaching to the test, but it's really teaching curriculum, and it's teaching strategies and learning strategies that our students, students need. We have an analysis of standards where we have been strong, where we need to continue to build, teacher sharing, and from that data, curriculum planning. So that's happening on Tuesday with grades three and four with our ELA coordinator. And then, just finally, looking ahead, Science 21 has done a lot of work in the past couple of years, first with kindergarten, now with first grade, and what they're going to do with David Jacobs at Bosse's is continue to move through the grade levels to meet the newer standards for science. We have an increased focus on all the technology we have available to us. We have more iPads available for our young students. We have laptops being used in technology class instead of the desktops. Some of them weren't working well. And of course, Ed might talk about Google because I can't, but he's going to talk. And then, we have more teacher sharing and reflection on student work more than ever before. And we'd like to bring back the homework help nights again. Our big, our big thing is we need the parents to come. So we're going to start with third grade in October. We're trying to figure out how we can get the parents there to help with the math, and the teachers do such a phenomenal job. It's just easier if a few more parents would show up so that they can help spread the word about how valuable these nights are. So that's our opening. It's been a busy few weeks. I can't believe it's not even, I don't know, September 22nd, but it's going to be a full year ahead. Any questions about anything?
No, sounds busy.
It's busy.
You know, it's, I think it's important for the community to see the kinds of things that go on as we start school. It's, it's very difficult, I think, when you're at home to really understand just the complexity of it and the amount of effort that goes into the startup of school and the kinds of things we're really interested in doing with kids and what we are offering. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, due to an educational commitment, I'd like to make a motion that the next presentation will be made by our student representatives.
Second.
Do we have to vote?
Hello, I'm Erin Peterson, and this is Richard Bernstein, and we're the high school representatives from our school. Some of the things that were brought up to us mostly by seniors was to develop a new senior privilege to have an open campus or a modified open campus so that students can come to and from school to either get food or if they forget a homework assignment, to go home quickly and get it.
Personally, as a senior myself, you know, I forget things. I mean, I got stuff going on. I got college, you know, recommendation letters, and, you know, I do forget homework from time to time. And I, you know, having a car, I would personally like to go to my home, to grab like a sandwich and go get my homework and come back. I don't know how this would be possible, but I would personally like that.
Okay.
Pretty much all we got.
That's a start.
Yeah.
That's a good start. Give us a headache right of mine.
We will, of course, then make a recommendation to the principal to explore all of the ramifications and report back to us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what we're looking for, things that people are interested in, so we appreciate it.
So we'll sit down.
You have to go home and put your purple on. Are you both seniors?
She's a junior, I'm a senior.
Okay, purple and green.
Two very good creative corridors.
Good luck tomorrow.
C-17.
We look forward to a great, great stories. Okay.
Middle school? Yes, middle school.
My name is Ed Halcy. I have the privilege of being the principal of Putnam Valley Middle School. I will apologize in advance for not being quite as detailed as everyone else this evening.
That's okay.
I know.
Long J fireworks and/or a dance.
No, I don't know what that's kind, that must be Miss Intrery because I don't have them. I don't even have pictures. Yeah, there used to be a rule that we had to start the meeting and end it the same day. Hopefully, that comes into play still. So first of all, I'm going to start off by saying, you know, thank you to Mr. Bellino and the custodial staff. Although you may think that something as simple as a locker change may be aesthetics, it's bigger than that. It's much bigger than that. If you have the opportunity to walk in, you'll see a, it looks like a different building. And so when they were ripping some of those old lockers out, Mr. McCarty found some very interesting, I'll call them artifacts, that had gotten wedged behind those from many years ago, and we, we found some very interesting paint colors that must have been popular back in the day because I have no idea what shade those would actually be called. So we do have some, we have some old schedules from the 1980s, we have an old student newspaper from way back when. I think I was the only one in the building that recognized any of those teacher names, Mr. Smith May. However, it was, you know, it was some clever and cute finds. So just to move on to my presentation for tonight, so thank you, Pat, and the custodial staff. I don't know what, what they're doing to the floors, but they look like they're brand-new. The whole place is just, the person who paints did an exquisite job. I mean, everything looked like it was brand-new, so it was really kind of awesome. So I'll start off with some enrollment comparisons for you. In June 2016, last June, obviously, to this September, our opening numbers, you can see, if you go down to the very bottom of the page, our total in June and our total now is exactly the same. This is the first time that's ever happened. We've had, we've had changes in and out of all the grades, and I had to go back and double-check and go back and look at old presentations to say, is this really the right number? And they're the right, it's 539, that's what we had today. So you can see, we, we have that bump in grade seven in September of this year. We predicted 145, we have 150. That's also that same grade level, I don't know what it is with this grade level. Last year, when they were sixth graders, we had to come in early September and ask for an additional section of sixth grade because they all came into sixth grade. Well, they're all coming into seventh grade, which is that same cohort of students.
Are these, could some of it be attributed to those at the end of some private school years? They moved in sixth and seventh grade?
No, I don't, yeah, that used to be a little bit more of it, but since some of the local parochial schools have, have phased themselves out, that, they seem to be coming from other places, like other parts of the county, other states. I don't, I don't know how you come in from California and pick Putnam Valley, you know, what, what's that, that identifier? But we have people from all over the country that came in and picked us, which was kind of nice. We have quite a nice diverse population. So our average class sizes, and I do want to bring some attention to this slide particularly, you can see in fifth grade, we have five sections. Our class sizes range between 20 and 25. Our encores are 20 to 25. Sixth grade, 21 to 23, we do have six sections. Our encores are up to 28 because we only have five sections of them. In seventh grade, so we have six sections of, of encores, I'm, taking that back, we have six section of core classes in some areas. But as I reported to you last June, or when we started our budget process, that our social studies and our Spanish classes were going to be high. And this, of course, is the grade level that people moved into. So our social studies classes in grade seven are at 29, and our Spanish classes are 30 and 31. Of course, we have an aide in the 30 and 31. We've assigned a very new male aide who's doing an exquisite job for us in that area. I don't know if he has a Spanish background or not, but he's getting kudos from the Spanish teacher. But those numbers are high, especially for that content area. And if you can take a look down at grade eight, we're at 25 and 27, which are respectful for those ages. So we do have some news. We did submit over the summer, and by the way, everything that Margaret said, ditto. So we did the same types of things, just moving to different grade levels. There's no need to repeat all of those things for you. We did submit our Schools to Watch application over the summer, which was very big. We thought it was going to take us two years to complete that process. We were able to do it in a year. It was really teacher leadership that helped to complete that. Mr. McCarty co-chaired that committee last year, and over the summer, we, we word, we took a week to wordsmith it and we got it out. It was quite a lengthy application, but it was a lot of good work by a lot of hard-working teachers to pull that off. IDE, I'll tell you a little bit more about that in the next slide. We do have some new encores where we've kind of tapped into the expertise of some of the new teachers that we have. We have encores in journalism, science research, replicating the process that's used here at the high school. It's very successful and kind of exciting, and we've incorporated digital citizenship into that as well with a move towards Google and students being online more often. We really felt the need that they had a real solid background in, in digital citizenship. Our instructional support, both in ELA and in math, with Mr. Coleman and Mrs. Kahn, has been ongoing through the summer and started up already this school year. We have clubs and activities, which I'll give you a little bit more specific about, and we have our Active Learning Lab, which Mr. Bellino gave you a little bit of an overview as well. So in terms of IDE, which stands for Innovative Designs for Education, it's really our problem-based learning cohort. We started off with seven this year, which was the maximum that we were allowed to take in our first cohort. We had over 30 teachers show interest in it, but a lot of them were not available because we, we didn't introduce it until literally the last day of school. So their summer plans are already in place. It's a two-week summer process to get them all on board, full-day sessions for two weeks. It's a learner-active, technology-infused classroom. They're very excited about the process. It's still in its infancy stages. Teachers are still being coached in the classroom, and the coaching is ongoing for them as well. The design and the implementation of authentic problem-based learning units is, is what they're working towards and striving towards. As I said to you last year, you know, I wanted to return to something that I was brought up in, in which was a, which was a multidisciplinary middle school, and this starts to lead that way. And it's, it's a very creative process for our students and our teachers as well. And they, it's an ongoing training and coaching, coaching process throughout the school year, but you should know that we're contracted with IDE for a four-year period of time so that we can bring in other cohorts as we go along. Our active learning space, our Active Learning Lab, which we call the ALL, space has been converted. You already saw this slide, so I don't have to really go over it with you again. But that space is actually, it's, it's beautiful when you go up and see it. And, you know, as I said, last year when we started talking about Maker Space, I don't think Maker Space is a room. I think Maker Space is a philosophy, and we just provide the space for that. So what we're trying to do is encourage students to work collaboratively, and, and I think you're going to see a lot of, of what we're talking about and what we're trying to create in that movie that we're viewing on Tuesday night. I forget what it's actually called.
Most Likely to Succeed.
Most Likely to Succeed. So this is Most Likely to Succeed in a Light version, and it's a startup version, and as we were going through this process with IDE and creating this lab, we really are starting to create what I, what I titled as a, as an IB school light, you know, without going through all those steps, but having students create their own problems. Those are the problems that interest them as opposed to us necessarily, I don't want to use the word imposing, but I will, imposing the problem on them.
That, that lab just, if you're not gone to see it, it makes the building feel 10 years old instead of 40.
Yes.
I mean, it very, not even 10 years old. It feels very young and new and fresh. I can't wait to see what the new furniture's going to look like, but for back-to-school night, even the furniture that was in there and getting rid of all the darkness and all the books, getting rid of books, I mean, getting rid of the old books on, on, on really bad, ugly shelves that have been there forever, it has a completely different feel. The building really feels different in this year's walk-through at back-to-school night, and that room specifically really makes it feel like a young building.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that. And, and just so that you know, since you did mention books, I do want to reiterate that all of those books were donated to our public library, who uses those books with students who go there to work, and for students who don't have books, they use them to provide books for students. So it was a direct partnership with our public, with Putnam Valley's Public Library. We do have a wide arrangement of clubs and activities. There's 21 clubs up there. There before and after school, we provide transportation on both sides of the club times. We do have two newer ones. We have a dance club that, that we're trying to start up that is being run by high school students for their community service project and, but monitored or supervised by a, a middle school teacher who's going to be the supervisor. And we have one, when they first, when they first asked to do it, I kind of giggled, but it's the knitting club, and it's become kind of popular. And my, my grandmother was a crocheter, and when I was a little kid, I learned how to crochet, but I never thought it would be popular, but she's got a ton of, of students that want to be a part of the club. So that's a new one that we've started up. So I hate, I hate to be brief, but that's what I have for you.
It's good, brief is good.
Can I answer any questions?
The, I just, my, my only 91 question, whenever you have 30 students or 29 students in a writing-heavy course such as social studies, you know, there, there's always that concern, are they going to have work reviewed, work done? We're pushing for writing, writing, writing. The reality is, it's a lot to read, so.
It's a lot to read, it's a lot to write, it's a lot to provide feedback for.
Is there, there no aide in there because we're under 30?
Correct.
At 29?
And I don't have another aide to put in there.
You don't have another aide to put in?
If I have you.
Would you want one if you? Yeah, I'm serious. Serious thought.
Have you ever heard me say no when somebody said, "Do you want?"
I mean, you know, for the kids, you know, if, we should consider that, I mean, 29, you're right at the limit, right? Legally, we have to at 30, right?
31.
Or 31, so we're very close. You might want to consider that.
Thank you.
I think I, I, I agree with you, Dave, and you have to think, what is the most effective way to approach that? And I know simplistically, we say, well, would we add another person simply, but perhaps think about it a bit because it's an area that's not required, and is there something that needs... something that needs to be done to support the students in that situation that we would like to do? Rather than just simplistic approach of what's required, et cetera, you know, if there is something that in fact is supportive to the students.
I agree with you, Dave.
This is why the teaching system becomes important.
So think about it.
My head's gone into it. I'll speak with Dr. Wills tomorrow.
I'm sure I'll.
And I think we wanted to bring it up, we want teachers to know that we do know those are, those are big numbers, and we have a lot we want them to do, so.
And I know they appreciate your support, so thank you.
Okay. Now the fireworks?
Good evening, everyone. This is Ms. Centriari for the Community of Massenturiary, our high school principal. While this is waiting to get ready, I do want to thank, of course, the tech team, who is here tonight just to make sure all our presentations run smoothly. So being the last of six or seven presentations, I feel compelled to be brief, plus the fact we're back here at 5:30 tomorrow morning to set up for the rest of Color Wars, so I don't want to be.
Is there a cut in your office?
I know. I don't want to be remiss, though. Of course, we have to thank the tech team, facilities, for all they did this summer to help us get up and running. We can't thank them enough. So Putnam Valley High School, I say we're 2.0 this year. We're a new version. We're the same solid foundation, great school, we've just been enhanced a little bit with some new things. Our enrollment has stayed steady. You can see each grade level. We have a little dip in the 11th grade, but that grade has always been small. Each year, we are getting a significant amount of transfer students. Last year, we had 23. This year, we have 15. And we've started a newcomers breakfast because those students don't get an orientation, so we invite Dr. Wills, the Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Doherty, the nurse, the athletic director, everyone to come and meet the students so they know how to reach out to get the different services at the high school. And that's also cooked by our learn students, which we're very proud of. They do a fantastic job. So our opening day, we did a little bit differently this year. We had, of course, our freshmen come in in the morning. We fine-tuned that from last year. They ran through their schedule, and I'll talk a little bit more about what they did that day. But then in the afternoon, instead of having classes, the upperclassmen came in and they rotated in groups. They either got their laptops on the first day, which again, the tech committee was integral in providing so that everybody could be up and running on Google Classroom for day one. In addition, they either went to organize their Color Wars activity because Color Wars is happening so quickly this year. They had their community meetings. Of course, we introduced and had our new Assistant Principal, Mr. O'Connor, run through different rules and regulations and welcome and introductions. And then we had an ice cream social. So it was a little bit different. We didn't have the barbecue this year, and the kids, from the feedback we got, didn't miss the barbecue, but they missed interacting with underclassmen. So they don't want to share the lounge with them, the seniors, but they do want to see them on the first day for pictures. So next year, we have to do a little bit more tweaking to fix that. Freshman foundations, the freshman teachers worked very hard making sure that there were plenty of activities for the students besides going through their schedule. They did goal-setting, vision-building. For example, Mr. Mahoney showed excerpts of speeches from Martin Luther King, Winston Churchill, famous people throughout history and how they built their vision and how students could then do the same thing for themselves. We had happiness, gratitude. They had the introduction to PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Supports at the high school, organization and teamwork. So that part went very smoothly. And we think it's very important to recognize rites of passage at the high school. As the seniors just mentioned, they want an extra additional privilege of going off campus. Right now, we're just looking at ways where we can recognize that they have spent a lot of time in school, doing the very best they can, and we want to let them know that we think that that's important as well. So we've done the senior welcome breakfast, which we did a really big production this year with lots of food, as you can see, and the seniors really enjoyed that. One of the initiatives that Mr. O'Connor and I are taking on is the attendance initiative. We want to really improve attendance at the high school in order for students to be successful. So our motto is strive for five, which we would like students to try to be in school, you know, and not be out for any more than five days a year. So we're really monitoring attendance closely. We're running attendance reports every week. Mr. Lee's been very helpful with that, just to keep track and provide interventions when necessary for students who have been out. So this was something we did this year that was new. Dr. Wills and I met with seniors, or graduating seniors, last year, and they talked about how helpful their English teachers were in providing help in the college essay preparation. So Mr. Lathrop spent two days this summer with 55 students in a college essay workshop. It was very hands-on, as you can see. Students got their laptops, again, thanks to the tech team. I was thinking maybe there might be 10 or 15 kids who came in for it. We had to cap it at 55. It just kept growing and growing, and we got a lot of positive feedback from students on that. We've opened our Achievement Center this fall, and that's gone very, very well. We have about 55 or 60 students already scheduled into the Achievement Center based on either their overall performance, based on, could be a combination of how they did in the middle school and needed extra support, whatever it was that we thought this could be a place where they could be more connected to school. So Mrs. Lombardo, Mrs. Cefaloni, Mr. Baker, they've done a wonderful job. You can see even decorating the room. We have calendars up with due dates. Students, they're sitting in a very community-style setting, and they talk about many different issues that come up in school to help them, again, be connected and be more organized in their own schoolwork.
Where physically is the Achievement Center?
Room 220, so it's down the end of the hallway. It used to be Ms. Noto's office. And as Mr. Bellino had mentioned, the psychologists have all been moved up together with the Student Support Specialist on the third floor to provide a suite where they all are located for easy access and confidentiality. And we're very excited in the reopening of the TV studio. We're grateful Mr. Mahoney, who is here filming, is going to be our technician in the TV studio, who's helping Dr. Messera get our new elective off the ground, but he's also, more importantly, available for individual teachers to bring their classes, to do opportunities for students to create on a regular basis and access that TV studio as we build it back up again. Again, we want to create an environment conducive to learning, so Mrs. Lucier's got a grant for us, so we don't just have a few pieces of alternative furniture. We have redone whole classrooms with alternative furniture, either the rocking chairs, there's the seated ball chairs, there are standing desks. So the students have really found them helpful, and we're looking at adding more and more of those, and also transitioning away from connected desks and chairs that make it hard for students to do that collaborative work. And of course, we're all very excited for the 11th and 12th grade lounge, which we have a countdown for and can't wait. If you look on the high school page, you'll see the Positive Behavioral Supports movie that was made this summer with Ms. Noto and Dr. Messera and our students. And that was a great video that explains our Positive Behavioral Support System and how we're trying to help our ninth and 10th graders to remain responsible, all the good things that they learned in the middle school. We want them to keep those habits in the high school. So Mr. O'Connor and I have been in the open areas a lot, in the cafeteria, reinforcing, picking up your food, being respectful, and all those things we're looking for to maintain. And this year, we're going to be exploring a late start time, and, you know, I kind of put this there to emphasize that we start very early at Putnam Valley High School, 7:08, and it is, you know, exhausting for students who are working late at night on their homework and then have to be here very early in the morning. And then we're also exploring the IB program. Mr. Mello, as the Instructional Support Specialist, and I are organizing right now school visits to other schools throughout Westchester, Putnam, Rockland Counties, Long Island, so that we can go visit and see how this program operates there and whether it's feasible for us. And then, of course, we have to recognize our National Merit semifinalists. Here come the fireworks. Maybe not. The big finale. We have no fireworks. Mr. Burrow can attest that they were there. They were there. But Mariana Silva is our National Merit semifinalist, so that is a very rare occurrence. She's in the top 1% of the nation, so she scored extremely well. She's an all-around outstanding student, artist, musician, scholar, so we're very proud of her achievement and all of the students. Any questions?
I just want to thank you for a really inspiring presentation. I want to thank all of the principals for really demonstrating to the community why we're here and what we do, and for a board and for myself to see what we are accomplishing. This is the best gift we have, if you will, for the kinds of support that we want to give to our educators who really have a vision for our students and are making that vision real. So thank you. Thank you very much. And for the energy and the enthusiasm for all of our principals that they and our administrators, also our athletic director for his wonderful enthusiasm and what he's bringing and what you're all bringing to our school district. And of course, we talked about the facilities. We have Mike here for our technology. We have so much to be proud of and to make us feel very good about where we are and what a wonderful community we have. So this is why we're here.
Thank you, Ben. Five thirty's going to come very, very early.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next? District goals? No, I think, wait a minute. Where are, I lost my, um, the next one.
Huh? No, you can use it though. Because if you borrow something, you have to return it.
And Ralph, I want to thank you for all the enthusiasm.
So last, I mean, at the last board meeting, we talked about our district goals, and I'm not going to.
Be careful here, on the witness.
Yes. But.
I think I know.
They cover many of the areas, many of the dimensions that we work on in schools that are significant. So we have our communication goals, which deal with how we improve communications throughout the district and with all of the constituent groups, all the stakeholder groups that we want to deal with, and how can we improve that? How can we make sure that we're reaching everyone? We are, you know, so we're looking at our current student information system. We're looking at how we can get more people to use our app and how that app can be immensely useful. One of the things we're actually looking at most recently is how we can develop a way that anyone in the community, and particularly our students, can report anything that they feel makes them feel unsafe. We're very focused on personal safety, so that's one of the technology pieces that we want to work on. And, you know, again, we have multiple communities in our school district, and we want to make sure that we reach them all. So we're looking at perhaps using paper more frequently in some areas because we do focus so much on electronic communication. Are there some other ways? So communications is a vast area. I have never been in any organization, any school district, where it isn't number one every year on the goal-setting, because that's really the most significant thing. So tonight, when we heard these presentations, if our community hears those, listens to those, they will understand what we're about. That's the content. That's who we are as a school district. How to get that out there and help people see that is our task. In curriculum and instruction, you heard this evening some of the issues that we have in our goals. We're talking about standards, we're talking about assessments, but we're also talking about active learning centers, ways to get students engaged and involved in problem-solving and in making the whole experience of learning and engaging process, because that's how we learn. We learn through interaction with others, through collaboration with various media that we're working with, whether it's writing, or art, or construction. So that's what learning is, and we're trying to bring that all together. So it's not just one dimension, it's multiple dimensions. And that's the discussion we hope to have on Tuesday night when we have that movie screening of Most Likely to Succeed, because that is a tremendous focus in that particular school and the school that they discuss on these problem-based projects and how students learn with them. But the other side of it that we have to embrace is the literacy and the math that really open windows and doors for students. They can't have just the problem-solving environment. They have to have that literacy, the ability to speak, to write, to, in order for them to unlock the doors and do these other things in their life and navigate their future. So there's this, it's this synergy between the content-based literacy, math, and all of the things that can come from that, that we hope to provide in our school district. And that's part of our curriculum instruction. That's really what we talk about in all of our curriculum and instruction goals. And, you know, we break it down in detail in the goals, kinds of things we're looking to do. And you heard about the IDE, this new problem-based learning process that we're bringing in to the schools. We're starting with the middle school, but already our high school's teachers are hearing about it, and they too are interested, and that's very exciting. We're looking, I'll go through this quickly, but Ed did not talk about Google Classroom, but that's a huge initiative for us in our school district that Ed and Pat and Mike and Laura Sherwood have been working on, so that we are looking at a platform that we can all integrate and use universally in the district. And this Google Classroom is one that is very much something that we can use across the district and in all kinds of situations, both for our research, for our writing, for our communication. And this is a very big initiative. We're doing a lot of training right now in Google Classroom. I did skip over one that I wanted to talk about, and one of the goals, and that is the coaching model and the co-teaching that Natalie Doherty has brought into, our Assistant Superintendent has brought in to the district to strengthen our collaborative teaching model that we use in our classrooms and to really understand how we can improve that environment where we have a co-teaching model. I'm not going to go through all of these, but most of these have to do with how we improve just our scheduling and our alignment in our schools so that we are most efficiently and effectively promoting our educational program. We talk again about the growth mindset model that we brought in and how we can integrate that model in all of our classrooms and all of our work. And of course, Sandy or Ms. Centriari discussed the later start time project that we're looking at, the feasibility of that, and our committee, which will be appointed this evening. And we've had some wonderful interest expressed by community members to be part of this, which we're very excited about because we want to hear from the community, and we have many parents who have agreed to participate. And that's good because one of the positive things of having this type of a committee is, in fact, to introduce new stakeholders, new faces, new people, to the things that our school is doing, because this interests them. And we want a project that is time-sensitive. In other words, that where there is a container for it. It's not ongoing forever. People like to get involved in something, they can see a beginning, middle, and end. It gives them a great sense of accomplishment. They've been part of that, whatever that project is that we're working on. So I think that's also very, very effective. And we have our fiscal goals that, you know, Jill has been working on, and that has to do with, you know, the way that, again, I talked earlier about how Pat's work is very much connected to an enthusiasm for education, and so there's this connection. It's important to do the education. Here's how we provide the facilities and the operations to do that. Same with Jill Figarella and her role as treasurer, where we have this enthusiasm for how do we get the educational work done in the most fiscally responsible way. That's what it's about. That's the connection and interaction. And, you know, we're doing a lot of work with multi-year planning, with collaborating with administrators, and working with the CAC, cross-training of staff. A lot of work was done this year in human resources with our learning plan, which Natalie and Dana Lopez worked on and really has made a huge difference in our whole human resources process. So that's another very important goal, to continue to build on that. And in our human resources, looking at trying to build a diversity in our school district of our, representative of our community in our staff. We have with administrators and working with the CAC, cross-training of staff. A lot of work was done this year in human resources with our learning plan, which Natalie and Dana Lopez worked on and really has made a huge difference in our whole human resources process. So, that's another very important goal to continue to build on that. And in our human resources, looking at trying to build a diversity in our school district of our, representative of our community in our staff. We have a lot of work to do in trying to recruit substitute teachers who are qualified. That's a, it's difficult today. It's harder today to find the substitute teachers and to, we have a lot of work to do in interviewing and getting that off the ground as well. We had a very good orientation of new staff this year. We want to continue to build on that process. And then we have our operations, technology, and transportation goals, again, looking at the later start process and energy performance contract, which you heard about today, green initiatives. And one of the pieces that we worked on actually today is, has to do with security in the district, a rapid response system that we're working on with BOSI's, which will be a very detailed, very rich sort of process for emergency response, working with our community first responders, with our fire, with our police to ensure that our buildings are easily accessible in case of an emergency. And this is a huge project in terms of the data that we're collecting, in terms of where the shut-offs and turn-offs and water and gas, I mean, things that we would not necessarily think of. But BOSI's is sponsoring this project and we're working on this as part of this security goal. And you heard about the athletic goals, the family ID, for example, and the culture of sportsmanship and positive school spirit. You heard from Brian on that. So, that's just a brief recap of...
And they really were reflective in all of our administrators' presentations.
Yes. And I also, I did provide for the board my own goals. And I'm not going to, again, spend a lot of time because they really are very connected to the district.
Of course.
And... I wanted to show the flowchart. I was so proud of this flowchart I didn't even care if you could see. The one, the other one that, I did send it to you, I believe, but I'm very proud of it, but unfortunately, it does not show up.
We can read it here.
Again, it's focused on, my goals start with student achievement because that is our main, our main focus, our main purpose. And we are looking at assessing student achievement in all areas, but also looking at learning strategies and on problem-based learning. That's my second goal. So, with, one without the other is insufficient and you need that connection. Students need to have the foundation and they also need the opportunity to practice. And that's what the problem-based learning is. How do you put it in practice? How do you apply it? Constantly have that dialogue, that dialectic between learning that literacy, but also applying it in writing for authentic purposes. Constantly learning about math and building engineering and developing projects that use it. So, that's, that's why that interactive dialogue is important. That's what engagement is. Next, next goal of mine is, has to do with improved communication. We talked about that earlier. The feasibility of the later start, that was another of my goals and, you know, of course, activities included, ensuring that all students feel safe in the school setting and looking at our whole reporting piece with that and accounting for incidents, checking on attendance, on stress, and so on. Collaborating with the treasurer to ensure, again, the transparent, fiscally responsible budget and overseeing the development of this teacher assistant unit, which I think is, it's very interesting that you're talking about trying to bring someone into the history program. If we have a teacher assistant, then you have someone who can actually help with the correcting, not just correcting, excuse me, multiple choice, but actually being able to give, with teacher guidance, feedback on writing. So, you can do the things that you're looking at. By state law, this comes into the next subject of what's a teacher assistant, but by state law, you really can't do some of the instructional pieces with a teacher aide. However, many of our teacher aides are actually, actually have qualifications to be assistants and we're helping them with the paperwork that will help them in that process so that they can do more of the instructional pieces. And also, as we hire any new staff for our, for that area of our work, our support work, we would hire assistants and we have a new, we'll be talking about that tonight, the job description and the, the new qualifications and how that will work. Any questions?
Did you go ahead and hand the goals?
Yes.
Okay. We pass the reading.
This is the...
Teaching system.
This is the teaching assistant.
Yes.
So, again, I just, it's a segue, if you will, into the policy, which is basically, right now, these are non-represented personnel because we don't have a unit for them. However, we believe that the CSEA, we've had discussions already and that they would be, there would be a carved-out set of areas in the, in the CSEA contract for the non-represented person, employee, in this case, certified teaching assistants. And the, most of the benefits and salary and so on would be the same, would be in synergy and with the, with the teacher aide contract and the CSEA contract. We're still working on that and we haven't got, but we have to, the board is responsible at first to set up the position, set up the policy, and then it's, and then it's negotiated. And then it's negotiated. That's the way it operates. So, our first job is to, in fact, have the policy and then...
Then we wouldn't need to change this policy because once they are part of a unit, they're no longer part of this policy because we wouldn't have non-represented policy.
No, you wouldn't have non-represented. They'd be part of it. But these are the terms and agreements, the terms and conditions of the first step of the process, which is to create the position. Of certified teaching assistant. And pretty much the same as our CSEA. It's all the same. Everything in it was taken from that.
And we're looking to waive the second reading in today's event, sorry?
So that we can move forward. Yes. So that we can move forward. And we do have some positions that need to be filled and we want to be able to post those. And as I said, the difference between the aide and the assistant is that the aide is there for safety purposes and as monitoring, for, they can correct papers, but only, you know, in a very concrete way. And we need assistance in some of our programs, both for IEP purposes and for situations like the one we're talking about now with the social studies class.
And the teacher's assistant can actually do a scripted...
Yes.
Educational program.
They can do a scripted educational program under the guidance of a teacher. And they, and they have a certification from the state.
So, then let me, as far as this policy is concerned and the job responsibility, say we have a teacher and a teaching assistant and the teacher is not able to teach that class, can the teaching assistant teach that class without getting a substitute?
They have to be substituted.
They would have to be substituted.
They would be doing it as a substitute.
Right.
But they'd be able to teach as a substitute.
But we wouldn't need to then hire a substitute for that?
No.
Yeah, because our substitute aren't certified teachers either.
No. And now the rules, of course, having a substitute with certification, it's a 90-day rule instead of a 40-day rule. Yes. And many of our aides are in the process of becoming teacher assistants. That's, we're not, we're not looking to eliminate our aides. We need aides for many purposes of safety and security in our classrooms. We're not eliminating those positions. What we're doing is giving our aides the opportunity to take on this new role. And also, when we have new position, any new positions, for example, if someone retires or leaves for any reason, any new position would be a teaching assistant position.
Now, will you be, is there going to be a fairly, a fairly spelled-out distinction? I mean, I can...
Yes. I actually had sent you, I believe, a format with the, with the distinction that's very, very clear. And the state lays it out very clearly.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Because that would be a question, you know, if you have teacher's aides and then they're seeing that a teacher's assistant is doing the same thing they're doing, but there will be different...
Yes. It's very clearly laid out as to what the roles are. And it involves instructional, basically. I'm going to guide you some teacher instruction. That's what the assistant can do, not an aide.
So, we're going to read the policy, but then in, do we have a resolution to actually...
Do what's tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Excuse me. There is a resolution.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't need to discuss, Nisba, because none of us are going to Buffalo.
And we have time to go over the resolutions that are recommended from...
If anybody decides...
If anybody's going to go, it's only if we're going to vote.
That's only if you're going to vote.
Okay. Okay. So, that runs us through the presentations. The students already spoke. Anyone from the PTA? I thought so.
Yay, for your patience.
And your name has been mentioned in many presentations today, so, well, the PTAs, so that was nice.
Yes, yes. They all commended me for staying after they were all done. So, my son ordered his own pizza tonight.
Self-reliance is an important skill.
Yes. My name is Amy Sauter. I am the new PTSD president for the next two years. First, just wanted to say that, yes, the school year went off very well in the high school. We had lots of positive feedback from parents. I think they were more well-prepared with the change in opening day and it was great, wonderful. And I just want to plug that we had a great, parents coming out our first night, which was on September 8th. And unfortunately, we were only there for about an hour and there's just too much information to share with new high school parents. But we're getting, we're getting a lot of parents to come out, which is a beautiful change because that's been a struggle for the last couple of years. We have a paint night fundraiser coming up on Friday, October 14th. The high school art teacher, Jen Armbruster, is donating her time and she'll be teaching everybody how to paint a wonderful portrait. We have a really strong membership total for the beginning of the year. Usually, we're at this number come January, February, and we've already reached it now, which is wonderful, really wonderful. We have our usual Barnes and Noble fundraiser set for Friday night, December 9th, and we'll be getting elementary school, middle school, and high school kids to come out to sing, read some poetry, and wrap some gifts for those who come to make a purchase.
That's always a nice night.
Yeah, really nice. And we're working on a virtual golf fundraiser, so we get some dads out at the back nine. Right now, we have it set for a night in October, but we haven't finalized a date yet and we're not sure how we're going to run it, but it should be fun, something different, very different. And our flyer just got approved today. We're, it's not a fundraiser, but we're calling it a PV Community Day and we're going to be working with the PTA. And I just met with Parks and Rec this afternoon for a Jets and Miami Dolphin game.
I saw that.
Price of tickets, $60 if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
We tried to keep it as low as possible, so we're not making any money off of anybody. But every kid who buys a ticket, and parents too, each kid will get a winter hat, a Jets hat. I'm personally not a Jets fan, but it's fine.
I kept hearing that.
I'm a Dolphin fan. I got really lucky that it was a Dolphin game. But it's the only Saturday night game, so we're hoping that many people will buy tickets and come out. And we're trying to figure out transportation so that each family doesn't have to buy a parking pass.
Did I miss that date?
December 17th.
That's a cool night.
Yes. Hopefully, it'll be a warm December. But tickets will be on sale through October 21st and we'll be at all the games on Saturday with a table to hopefully advertise and sell tickets.
That sounds great.
And that, that's it so far.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, nice to have a report. Dr. Wells?
Well, I'll be, I'll be brief. We've said so much already about what's happening in school. I do want to, again, mention the movie coming up at 7 o'clock on September 27th, Most Likely to Succeed. It will also have a panel discussion afterward about schools of the future. And there's, there's a wonderful Nova presentation on PBS on schools of the future also that I recommend for everyone to see because it really did summarize so much of the latest research on learning and what's happening in schools that are doing some very exciting...
Well, it's great that with that, that special, there's something for the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level.
And there's also a piece on the later start and very interesting.
Which was triggered, it was a Californian, I think, was the story of there were a number of sequential suicides that had happened in one school, in a very high-achieving school. This is, I guess, Silicon Valley area. So, they had changed their schedule to kind of reuse...
Give people more time to, yes.
Recover, recover.
To recover and de-stress and looking at block schedules. So, you know, when you do something like a later start, it also allows you to do some different things with your schedule when you think about it as well. So, that committee I was going to mention and the congratulations to Mariana Silver, top 1% of the nation in, as a semi, married semi-colleagues.
It runs in the family. Her brother got it and her mother got it.
And her mother got it too.
Yes.
Wow. That's nice.
Okay. That's really, really remarkable. And her, also, her work in science research is terrific. She's doing a project on, I hate to mention this, but the, the positive effects of green, we're talking about trees, so, the positive effects of green on one psyche, particularly for workers in cities who look at green buildings. And I know that Mr. Bolino was very instrumental here in helping her do her research at the Javits Center. And she was very grateful for that and for the kind of work she did, looking, you know, having a controlled experiment with some of the employees going out for a break in the, and watching, looking green, at green, the green roof and others not, and studying the responses and the cognitive changes. So, she's doing some very interesting work in the science, in our science research program.
Maybe on the ruse that we don't put solar panels on, we put grass.
Green solar panels.
Well, I'm not going to enter into this at this moment.
Do you all know that Dr. Wells lived in Maine for 12 years? This is going to be quite a conversation.
And also, the nature's classroom at the elementary school is new. And then, I also wanted to comment on the screening of Lockdown by Sarah Spurling, one of our former student here, and it was very well-attended. It was really wonderful to see the community come out for that. And it was a very powerful statement on the night before September 11th that, and that community came out and saw what was happening here. There was a sense of bonding and connection and, again, something very, very special in that experience. I also wanted to mention the character education assembly at the elementary school. A lot of work goes into that. You saw the photos of the safety patrol. This is really a nice initiative, again, getting kids involved in responsible behavior and responsibility for their own environment. Also, we have, we have some wonderful initiatives by students and one that I wanted to mention was a seventh grader, Suzanne Gentile. Suzanne Gentile's daughter, Olivia Gancalves. And she built a loggerhead runway for keeping sea turtle hatchlings safe as they make their way from the nest to the ocean. She wrote a paper, she did a concept and a prototype that was all inspired by Mrs. Brothers, who encouraged Olivia to explore science differently. And she, her work is now being displayed and has been supported by the Lagerhead Marine Center in Florida. And, and this is, again, the kind of thing that we talk about in that Most Likely to Succeed movie. You'll see how students can become entrepreneurial in this way. They can think creatively and actually do something that has meaning. I look at the Magma students in our school who've done their soccer program and what they've learned about working with students with special needs, what kind of, the kind of fulfillment they got from that, but also by creating this program and following through and now having more students... and now having more students. This is the type of thing that students can do. We have, we have many other examples, by the way, that I could mention in our school district. But it's something that you want to nurture, you want to open students up to and give them the opportunity to have a voice and to have agency. That's the word that we use, students having agency, being empowered to do things, and to have people inspiring them to do that. So that's the superintendent's report.
Okay. It's a very busy start of the year and a very exciting one. Okay, let's move on to new business.
Comment on agenda items.
Oh, right. First, I'd like to invite public comment on agenda items thus far.
I just had two things.
Okay. You're not the public, you could have done it anyway.
Well, no, it's, you know, the, I sat in on the Con Ed meeting this morning for the energy performance thing, and one of the things I made sure that they were clear on something I think we wanted was very much an educational component, something that was very concrete for all campuses to see and not to be relinquished to the roof, and not just be able to see on a screen the results while we want to see that, but like, examples of what, what's happening, what is it doing, and in, like showroom fashion, either in very prominent places in the buildings. One of the conversations turned into, even though wind turbines weren't part of the whole plan, in a very small way, we could, like, on, on the poles here, the light poles, you could throw small solars and wind turbines so they could power those lights.
Just to demonstrate what the solar is doing.
So it's visual, and you'd use it as part of that, as well as maybe, like, you know, maybe there's an area in the front of the campus or somewhere very obvious on campus that could power a light for, like, a flag pole. But again, so it's concrete, it's not out of sight, out of mind, it's sitting on a roof, and people aren't, you know, thinking about that, and use it really for the educational value. They had said, you know, their goal is to, you know, it's a matter of cost, cost coverage for the energy savings paid for it. Doesn't mean that we can't do over and above that for the educational piece.
I think that the conversation about the trees, you know, a little snarky with, you know, our, our conversation there, but it's, it's an important thing for the kids to understand that, yeah, we, we're thinking about taking these trees down and replace, but that's the downside, but the offset is we're going to have solar, and that is, is going to be more advantageous for the environment than taking the trees down is away, and, and things like that, considerations that they need to understand how these decisions are making, you know, incorporating stuff like that.
Right, right, right.
Not, not just see how things work, you know, how decisions are made, and what we, what considerations are there, right? And actually math, you know, getting, well, truly, right, equivalencies and that type of thing, for sure.
That's great.
Question, Ms. President, motion number four. Are we going to have that tonight, or are we going to remove that from the agenda?
That will be removed from the agenda. So when we, we'll just skip right over and go from three to five, and I, Maureen, you will strike that from the agenda.
Yes, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. You said two things. Did you say both things?
Actually, new standards were, were mentioned in the presentations, and I know new standards have just come down, and it's now like opinion time. Is, are, is the district assigning people, or is this all volunteer for anybody to be start with the opinion and feedback on the new standards that have come down today?
Well, we will be talking about the new standards, but it's not as clear as one thinks, the new standards. They are, you know, I haven't seen the actual new standards, but the-
They're proposed.
They're proposed.
Right, I'm saying, and they're looking for, you know, feedback, so I'm just wondering as far as, as a district, is there going to be a formal group that's going to do something about it, or is it all going to be up to whoever wants to do it as well, that type of thing? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I think we'll, I know we'll be talking about it in our office, and since we just got the information, I have to go over it with, you know, with the administrators, and I'm particularly going to go over it with Cheryl and Mick for the ELA in math. But I also heard a summary, some summary comments today, and, and the only area in ELA that's of major import is that they're taking out the text complexity piece, and it's unclear what they're doing with other things. And that probably is a good idea, because what they're talking about is more appropriate developmental reading, for example, which we would want to comment on, and it is a positive change. Some of the bigger changes are coming out, not in the standards, but in the new federal ESSA law, which will guide us in the fact that, and I'm assuming the state will pick up on this, in that we've had this question about should special education students be tested on one level or another. This will give an opportunity to have students tested and assessed at the level-
That they're-
If they have special needs.
Right.
And same with ENL, all of that. That particular piece is probably more significant in how the state will interpret the federal guidelines, so. But yes, we will be talking about it and following it, but we'll see. We may want to have some input. And if, certainly if the board has some, I would like to be able to, to do that together.
It may be a good way, a conversation.
Yeah.
Even a winter retreat or another retreat to just get a chance to talk about it, because it would take a lot of time to do a board meeting.
Yes, yes.
So maybe have another public, you know, retreat at some point during the year, just for the purposes of reviewing-
I don't know what the timeline is for those. I haven't seen that yet.
So, we'll give more specifics. Okay, let's move on to new business, if anybody has anything else.
Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the first reading and waive the second reading of policy 9250, non-represented employee certified teaching assistants, as per document number 6617 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby creates the non-represented position of teacher assistant as per the attached job description, document number 67/17, with a salary schedule as defined in document number 68/17. Documents attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the 2016-17 Board of Education district goals, as per document number 69/16 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, or the new number four?
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint the following as members of the committee to study the feasibility and options for latest start time at high school. Jennifer Albano, Nadia Amin, Jen Armbrusher, Pat Bellino, Richard Bernstein, Brian Burrows, Jerry Carlin, James Chiaffi, Janine Denike, Natalie Doughty, Joseph Ferraro, Joe Figarella, Cara Gabay, Cheryl Khan, Sandra Intieri, Bruce Ludovici, Catherine Montalat-
Talde.
Montalat.
Montalde.
Montalde.
Sam Oliverio, Barbara Palmly, Erin Peterson, Margaret Podesta, Jeanette Ryan, Diana Romero, Melissa Rosano, Anne Sortner, Scott Spurling, Dan Turner, Rosanna Vo-
Viva.
Vo- Viva.
Viva.
Tiffany Wakasa, Dr. Francis Wills, and Jennifer Yovan.
Janet.
Janet.
Yovan.
Yovan.
Second.
Questions or comments? Very well done.
It's actually, is it, I just want to make sure, it's Amy Sosa, right? It's Amy, not Annie.
Amy.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your work cut out for them.
First meeting of that, of that committee is next Thursday night, 29th, at, I believe it's 5:00.
Six.
Resolved to approve the corrective action plan contained in district response to state controller's audit report dated July 8, 2016, as per document number 7517 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to make sure, we really want to approve that without having that being presented to us where Jill went over, you know-
She did.
I know, but there were details in this, which we never really had up there, but is everyone comfortable with that? That's all, I'm just saying.
Well, this is not, this is the state audit, not the internal-
This is the state. No, this is the one where we had the official, but this is the district's response why we're not, you know, bad or we're not missing things.
Right, well, the corrective action plan and the, the audit report itself has been online since-
I know that.
And then-
And at our last meeting, you spoke about it as well.
August 25th, actually, at that meeting also.
Because it's all part, it was part of the response letter.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure, is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, fine.
It just didn't have the formal board approval of it.
Yes.
Right, we needed a formal board approval to finalize it and send it to the state for the final paperwork piece of it, that's all this is.
Any other comments on that? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for all your work on that, Jill. Number seven.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Amy Lee Ludovici, a full-time teacher, to a .2 science teaching assignment at the high school, a sixth assignment for the 2016-17 school year, with compensation in accordance with the PVFT contract.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Bruce Ludovici, a full-time teacher, to a .2 science teaching assignment at the high school, a sixth assignment for the 2016-17 school year, with compensation in accordance with the PVFT contract.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Both of these are as a result of the changed model in chemistry. These are support periods in times for the chemistry program.
The other's option.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, yes, moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items two through 12 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE and CPSE placements. We're approving days without pay for an employee so they can handle a family matter. We're amending the high school advisor list, and I'm not going to go through them, but we're amending the list of various clubs and other activities, who the advisors were going to be. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. We're accepting a very generous donation from Girl Scout Troop 1362 for the environmental club. We're approving additional hours for the district nurses so they can meet with the physical athletic department and other groups. We're approving an overnight trip for Mr. Spurling's fourth grade class to the Madden Outdoor Center in Carmo on October 13th and 14th. We're approving additional hours for teachers to provide the Wilson Reading Program to our students. We're approving consultants for tutoring services for our students. We're approving Nicole Turner as a volunteer for the JV volleyball coaching position, and we're permitting Howden students to wrestle with our boys' wrestling team at the high school. And I want to just make a special note of thanks for Nicole Turner, who volunteers as a, a coach.
That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
These are, these are out of order. The public comment should be before executive session.
I don't, are we doing, do you need the executive session tonight? That was discussion-
I think that was their possibility, but I don't think we needed any longer.
Isn't that for the, that one piece?
Yeah, we asked if people wanted to have it. If you want to have it, collective bargaining.
It should be short.
Okay. So let's do the public comment.
On any topic.
On any topic, any topic at all, and then, anything else from the board?
I just have one small thing. The girls' soccer team is off to a 6-0 start, best start of any girls' soccer team ever here. So just hats off to them. I saw one game where they came back from 2-0 down to, to win the game against Croton. It was fantastic, just hats off to them, they're, they're off to a great start.
And they're playing as part of homecoming, as part of homecoming, aren't they?
Yes.
Yes, they will be at homecoming.
Wonderful.
Special team, come check them out.
Excellent, thank you very much for that. And, just before we go into executive, I just want to congratulate and wish all of our students safe and fun. Color Wars tomorrow, same to all the staff. Emphasis on safe and fun, and in good spirit.
And safe.
And safe. And I would now have a motion to-
The reason there isn't right, use the collective bargaining reason, this is the focus.
Yes, okay. Okay. A motion to go into, to convene an executive session for the purposes of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which time no further business will be discussed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.